Good afternoon, everyone. It is Thursday, May 5th at 5:01 PM and I will call to order the Freetown Board of Selectment Meeting. Trevor is unable to make the meeting tonight, so I will be running it. We're gonna go into executive session and then return back into open session. We will be going into executive session for the following two reasons. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with public employees union, local 1-1-4-4, Lyona, all bargaining units, the Freetown Police Association and the Freetown Full-Time Firefighters Association, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on a bargaining position of the public body and the chair seller declares. Reason number two, MGL 30A, Section 21A 6, to consider the purchase exchange lease or value of real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body. So with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectmen Loops?
Yes.
Selectmen Zager?
Yes. Thank you.
Alright, everyone. Welcome back to the executive session. We're gonna take things a little out of order. We're actually gonna start with Personnel Board, so I'm gonna pass it over to Carlos to start.
Thank you, Mr. Andrew Trent. Good evening, everyone. Personnel Board, we're here to discuss possible action on the following topics. I will, first topic will be to discuss and vote on the charge, what charges for the senior library senior center building subcommittee. So for this, for number 12 and 13, I want to entertain a motion to move it to the May 9th meeting, so that we can get more people that have registered for this subcommittee or sign up for the subcommittee and also wait for our town council to give us more advice on the matter. So it's already scheduled for May 9th, for next Monday, so I'm gonna entertain the motion to move this number 12, 12 and 13 to Monday, Monday night. That way, we have more time to review everything and make sure that we know exactly what's going on and give you the right information.
I will make that motion.
I second the motion. Oh. And make, all in favor?
Aye.
Sorry. Aye. Sorry.
It's okay. All good.
Number 14, approve the appointment of Tim Dacey as Cemetery Sexton effective 5/6/22 through 6/30/22. I reviewed it. I think it's more than fair. I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Dacey to Cemetery Sexton.
Motion made.
All in favor? Second. I make the motion. Entertain the motion. You make the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Actually, did you second that?
Second, I did.
You did second.
Oh, maybe I did. I second the motion. It's a little more smoother.
You want to do it again? Or I don't have a problem with just doing that again.
Okay, I entertain a motion to appoint Mr. Dacey as Cemetery Sexton.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor?
You can second it.
Second it? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, moving on. Approve the appointment of Deborah L. Petty as Serpent Commission Member effective 5/22/20, 5/25/22 through 6/30/22. Alright, I reviewed it. This is just a continuation from the last appointment. I entertain a motion to approve Ms. Petty to Serpent Commission Member.
Motion made.
I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next discussion number 16 is discussion and vote on whether to approve the pay rate for the temporary indexer position to be at eighteen dollars and forty cents, forty-five cents an hour, up to sixteen hours per week.
That's what our senior cops make under the union.
I don't see any issues with that. I entertain the motion to go ahead and approve the pay rate, temporary indexer.
Motion made.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright, and that's all for you, so we're gonna bring it back over to me. Agenda item number three. So first, we're gonna approve the meeting minutes from 4/11/22 and 4/14/22. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve these meeting minutes.
Make the motion to approve it.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number four, discussion with the upon-need junior football and cheer organization regarding unauthorized use of the Long Pond Road football field, Petson Field and associated issues. Do we have anyone here from?
Actually, Mr. Whitley called, sent an email this morning saying he was not able to make it this evening, so he asked us to put it on a future agenda.
Okay, so alright, so that's fine. So we're gonna push Agenda item number four to a future meeting.
Make the motion.
We don't, we don't need to make the motion. We just push it. It's fine. Thank you. So number five, discussion and vote on whether to approve the agreement between the town and Freetown Environmental Partners for the MS4 Storm Water Management. So this is pretty straightforward and something we have to do. We were behind on it and now we're playing the catch-up to it. It's a ten-year plan, so I reviewed it and I don't, I don't see any problems with it.
Same here. I took a look at it and it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, pretty basic contract and obviously it's expensive, but it is everywhere, so it is what it is, so. With that, I will entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the town and Freetown Environmental Partners for the MS4 Storm Water Management.
I second, I make the motion.
Alright, I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number six, discussion on the Freetown Elementary School's request for the selectmen visit and selectmen for a night essay contest. So this is-
It's a tough one to prove.
I know, I don't know how I feel about it. But I read about it and basically what they do is in years past, the selectmen have gone and, you know, they speak with people there, the kids there about what our jobs entail and then afterwards, we, they have a winner that comes here and they're selecting for the night and they actually vote on stuff with us, so. I love it. I'm all about it. It makes me happy. So I don't have, obviously don't have any issues with this.
So it's a little selectmen, big selectmen.
Yeah.
I like it.
So, I, I mean, I guess, I believe we had an email from you on the times and stuff, right? So we can, we can work that out, so. Yeah.
It's gonna be 2:15 to 3:00 PM and-
One of these dates. So do we have to discuss it now? Again, I guess technically we would have to figure out a date that works, because we can't keep it offline. So we'd have to figure out, so they are saying that the time is between 2:15 and 3:00 on these following dates, so.
Look at the calendar.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I'm bringing up my calendar. Yeah, actually, so it's Wednesday and 26th. I'm actually open.
So Wednesday and Thursday, May 25th and Thursday, May 26th, or?
Yeah, I, yeah, once we get into June, we're talking May.
June, so June 8th is another Wednesday and Thursday, June 16th.
I cannot do the 8th or the 16th actually, so I have to do one.
One of those two days works for me.
Okay, so why not, well, let's, let's do the 26th. Okay, we'll do Thursday, we'll end with Thursday, 26th, but I guess obviously the other part of it is, is you're gonna have to talk to Trevor about it and see if that's something, because I know in years past, all three selectmen have gone, right? So I mean, if he can't make it, then we have to try and rework it or just the two of us go, then it is what it is. But I think it would be good for all three of us to go. I will tentatively say that, so he would un-
We can coordinate our outfits, so we're sure we all match.
Yeah, I don't know that we need to go that far.
I think for Trevor, it depends on whether he's working in Boston or working from home that week.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of the, if it's not 26th, I think the 25th works for Jared as well, right? So if one of those two days works for him, great. Well, can you bring back up the discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. Alright, so that's, that's that. There's really nothing to vote on now, so. Number seven, discussion and vote on whether to approve the request from the Better Together to hold an event at Hathaway Park on 5/19/22. So it's a, it's a religious event, is what I'm gathering from it, that's gonna be held at Hathaway Park. I don't see any issues with it. I don't, we'll see if it being a huge traffic issue or anything that's gonna cause. Do you have any issues with any of that?
Well, I think the only thing that is, I think if we know that they wanna use the facilities, we should always ask them to do this, sign an indemnification, you know, so you should get her. On some level, I think it's nice that they're asking, because in reality, the park is open, right? So if they wanted to just gather there as a group, they could gather there without requesting permission, as long as it's not gonna get too large of an event, right? Because that creates-
Is anyone here from that event? Are you, are you all?
So that's my concern, is that, you know, it doesn't get too large and that they, if possible, sign an indemnification. But, you know, if I wanted to have a group of friends, I could call them, say, let's meet at Hathaway Park. There's no regulation for that, right? That's why we have these open spaces, so I think it's just best we don't promote or deny what, you know, the space is there to use, as long as you don't abuse it.
So do we, I guess, do we wanna email them back and get them to, see if that's something that they can get?
An indemnification. We talked about that already.
So should, I guess I can make the vote based on receiving that, to approve it based on receiving that?
About forty people in attendance last year, according to the email.
Yeah, yeah, it's not a big event, right? So it's obviously, so. Would it make it clear to Debbie if I vote on it now with that caveat?
Like I said, I don't even know that it requires an actual vote to approve from the board, because it's an open park. But you can just say, you know, is, uh, there's no concerns, the select board has no concerns with this event, as long as the size stays within reason for the space, and they sign, if they've signed an indemnification paperwork, which I have in the office, and, you know.
Yeah, I, I don't-
They don't use anything.
Yeah, so I guess I don't need to take any of that, right?
I don't think so.
Yeah, I guess we're just at that then, okay. Alright, so that one's fine. Number eight, discussion and vote on whether to approve the transfer request from the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District debt middle school athletic facility account in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents to the Freetown Lakeville Regional School District debt grade school pool area account. So it's just, it's a budget transfer. It's a, it's a within department transfer, so I don't have a problem with that.
Looking at what they're trying to do, it's just pushing it from one to the other.
Absolutely. So with that, I will entertain a motion to allow the transfer request in the amount of twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents.
I make the motion.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, number nine, discussion and vote on whether to approve the transfer request from the town insurance account in the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents, which has a balance of fourteen thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety cents to the liability insurance account, which has a deficit of eleven thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-two cents. So kind of the same thing, it's just a interdepartmental transfer, so I don't see any issue with it.
Neither do I. If I see this correctly, we're gonna be in the block after this is transferred over, right? So it's a little bit of a cushion for-
Could give you pretty extensive details in the-
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to transfer the amount of twelve thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
I make the motion.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Number 10, discussion and vote on whether to approve the water and sewer transfer request from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund for the amount of fifty thousand dollars to bring the account.
Yeah, you know, the water and sewers and enterprise fund, sort of their own little entity financially. They need some funds and they have retained earnings, so they're pulling the money out of retained earnings to cover their deficits. And you have those in your-
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I'm working with there right now. So, um, I don't really need to get into the details of what it rights, like why they wanna, where they want to go, like that kind of thing.
No, it's, it's like I said, it's their money within the enterprise fund.
Same thing as the other stuff, okay, so, okay. Alright, so with that, I will entertain a motion to transfer fifty thousand dollars for the water and sewer, from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Reserve Fund.
Make the motion approved.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So number 11, discussion and vote on whether to approve the transfer request from the town prop uniform allowance budget account to the town prop custodial overtime budget account in the amount of one hundred dollars from the building commissioner. So this was the pay, Tim's overtime.
He's just short on the amount.
Yeah, it's literally a hundred dollars, so it's negative to bring it back where it needs to be, so with that.
Okay.
With that, I will entertain a motion to allow the transfer of one hundred dollars to the town prop custodial overtime budget account.
I make the motion approved.
I will second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so we actually have till six o'clock before we can start.
I think we have town administrator.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Debbie off. Alright, so next we're gonna go over to Debbie for our county administrator's report.
Let me just talk about you and the council and those people.
You are, yeah.
Question on the council renovation.
I mean, that was what, I figured if you were all here, that's why we moved back to the beginning of the meeting. Right, so we were just, this has been put on hold, because I think there's been a lot of discussion about the library, the COA building, the addition to the COA building, the library and the COA building, and that's why we were moving these till Monday, when we have a lot of people who are interested in being on this subcommittee and then Trevor will be here. There's a, there's just a lot of, I guess, differing, differing opinions about how we should move forward. And I think the selectmen as a board, select board is going to probably really need to spend some time, look at, look at what's going on. We have the COA wanting an addition, but also COA library wanting a new building. In the meantime, we have the town hall that's falling down as well. And I think that it may behoove everybody to regroup and really figure out where we're moving going forward. We're moving in this joint building, which I don't necessarily disagree with or anything, but on the warrants, you'll see Monday night that we're looking at getting feasibility study money as well for this fifty-two acre campus that sits here to determine what's available for land to be used and what's viable to be used, because there's wetlands, there's public well areas that need to have no touch zones to them. And then there's a second article to do a feasibility study for town buildings. And what I think that should point out is, we have three really important buildings that need, need to be redone, right? We have the library, the no bathrooms. That's really an easy one. We have the COA that's way undersized for effective programming for the seniors. And we have a town hall that's just falling down. I think that we need a comprehensive review of the three buildings. I mean, we know that they all need work or replacing. But I think there's many different scenarios of how the town can accomplish what it needs. Whether that's one new building, that houses all three up here in this campus area, whether that's we keep the town hall, we renovate it, we annex to the COA and build a new COA library, whether we put an addition on the COA and build a new library town hall. There's so many pieces to this, that I think, in my personal opinion, which doesn't mean a whole lot, that maybe we would need to put a pause, and the seniors do not wanna hear that, I get that. But we need to really plan where we're going, because I think we're gonna just continue to spend money in the wrong direction if we don't stop, pause, do some hardcore planning and have the selectmen make a final decision of which way they wanna move. And all of this will be looking at budgets too, right? Because we don't have infinite money and nobody wants their taxes to go up. So I have been working a little bit preliminary with budgets and how, what we can afford this and what we can afford. And I think that needs to drive the bus. We have this much money, this is what we can do with it. But I think we need an outside firm that doesn't have a motion tied up into it and really give the board some good direction on how to move forward with all of the needs. Because I think the, what's going on right now is the, the COA is pitting against the library. And the town hall people, we're quiet, like, we're okay, but realistically, we can't go ten more years in that building. We can't. The ceiling's falling down, the light, the outlets catch on fire. I mean, there's things happening that's not good there. So I, I really think that it concerns me right now that this, that this is, this is what's going on, that the people are fighting now, like, because they all, they all have needs and they're equal. In my opinion, they're equal. I, I don't think the library needs a building more than the COA needs a building, more than the town hall needs a building. I think they all need, they all have great needs and they're equal in my eyes. And so I think we need to look at addressing all three of their needs and doing it in a planned, responsible way. I think if we go off and do this, and then we can't fit a third building, or we can never afford it. We don't have infinite funds, and I think that's an issue.
I also, not to cut you off, Debbie, sorry, but I just, one thing I wanna make clear is that I'm all about getting new buildings and I don't wanna Band-Aid anything. I do not wanna put a Band-Aid on something that's only gonna last a year or two. We've spent a bunch of money now and then we have to go back and do something again. It's tough, because everything seems like it drags on to everyone on the outside and there's so many pieces that happen with this. To what Debbie's saying right now, it's like there was money borrowed, there was money that was gone for the COA. And then we had to go back, because that couldn't include for engineering. So then we had to go back at the last town meeting and ask for more money. And then now we're still, now we're saying, okay, well, we can join, so we need to get everyone on the same page and then move everyone towards that same goal, so everyone can see the end, the light at the end of the tunnel, so to speak. So I think, you know, Debbie has a lot of experience in this stuff and, you know, so we have a, someone with us, obviously, in the building department too as well and stuff, that we have a lot of good advice coming our way to make sure that we do something, we do it right. This, this building being the prime example, right? They did this building, they did it right, and it's here for a while. It's, it's built for the future, and I wanna say the same thing about the next building, too, that it's built for the future, so.
I know the old parties that are involved, they feel as though this is dragging on or putting things on hold. That is not the case. We're, we're making sure that we're taking care of, of people from the COA, the library, people in town. Not trying to pass the buck on anything, we just wanna make sure that we're making the best decision for tomorrow, not just today. So that takes, I don't, we don't wanna rush anything. That's why we're pushing it a couple of days, make sure that we have all the right, proper information, how to move forward, okay?
Will you allow to comment?
Yes, fair enough.
Can I address the board?
Yeah.
Wayne J., East Freetown, member of the now disbanded COA Subcommittee. And I'm hearing the conversation about master plan, and I'm not disagreeing with that. But I'm just calling to your attention the November 10th selectmen meeting, November 10th of 2021, where that exact proposal was made, and here we are since then, and subsequent to that. COA Subcommittee was formulated, a library planning Subcommittee was formulated. The two committees went through and hashed out a lot of opinions and came together and decided that they would like a joint effort and move forward. And I'm hearing that all of that was for naught. And even why were the Subcommittee's even created? And personal efforts and time went into it, only to go back to November. And if you review the minutes, there is also a statement here that noted that a feasibility study proposed one large building, which I believe, Deb, you're just kinda talking about, is as a possibility. And all offices, libraries, COA, police and all town groups voted against the plan.
That's interesting. So I do remember we had a, a meeting and there was talks of buildings and where we, we were to, what was to do with the COA. And it was, and one of the things was is the, the cost of doing a building for the library is huge, right? And then that, so there was, at that point, that wasn't, it didn't seem feasible. But, and the library wanted their own building, the COA wanted their own building, the COA just wanted to do the addition. Library's asking for a new building, but then since opinions have changed, so I think that's part of the reason why we're, so you're saying it's all for naught, but you guys were able to get together and hopefully work something out and say, okay, well, now we're willing to work together. And hopefully that's the case, because it's, there's certain things that are gonna be fixed cost in my eyes, right? And this is something we've talked about before. If, it, no matter what, it's gonna be a large number, but there's certain things that will have fixed cost. So combining the two, at least, and maybe even three, will help us inevitably in the end. But, you know, it's, it's easy for me to say, but it's just, everyone has to understand that it, there's so many different moving pieces to this, right? And it's, it's frustrating, I get it, so.
I guess I'd ask what's changed since last November.
I, I think a lot of it's the opinions of the people that were sitting on those boards.
I think so. I mean, I think it's the trajectory, right? I think it was that we're gonna do the COA addition. We got a Subcommittee together that said, hey, we, we, we're gonna knock the building down, right? And it was like, whoa, that's a different project than what this selectman approved an addition. So there was a go back to the, to the, if we're talking a new building and we know the library needs a building, let's go back to the building committee and talk about doing a joint building. And that, and the two groups got together, the planning Subcommittee and the COA Subcommittee, and they said, yes, they would do a joint committee. That's the direction that things are moving in. In the meantime, now, I think some of the COA people are not happy with that, right? So there's a lot of, a lot of tension with that. And I think, so as I'm getting this information, as the town administrator, interim town administrator, I'm, I'm concerned, right? Because now we, we're moving in this direction, but we've got a lot of people who are not happy with that. And in the meantime, like I said, the town, the town hall is falling down around me as I'm sitting there. So realizing that if we go forward with the, and I'm not saying we wouldn't, go forward with the library, COA, the town hall is gonna be put on hold for ten years, and I, I don't foresee us being able to stay in that building, so then it's like, wait a minute, we need to make sure we are doing what's best for this town. And I, I, I need to, you know, the board actually just needs to think about where they wanna go. It's the, the board of selectmen that need to think about where we're headed, and I, and I feel like we need a little bit more information about. And, and things have changed, right? I think people may have an appetite for a single building, but I'm not suggesting that's the road we go. I'm suggesting we need an outside firm to come in and give us the scenarios. Like I said, maybe you rehab the existing town hall and use the COA as an annex once they get their new building. And maybe you put the addition on to the COA, knowing that that's gonna be the town hall annex while we wait, and then we build a new building for the COA library. And what's those, each scenario, what does it look like and what does it cost to the towns? Pay, paper, and I'm, I, I, I wouldn't even, I would even entertain going to the townspeople and asking them what their appetite is for this. Because there is so, you know, we have ten thousand people and they have different needs. And I think, like I said, when you're looking at it, you, I feel like we have one bite at the apple. If we spend another ten million dollars on infrastructure, which we, we probably will, there's not another ten million coming, right? There, there's, there, we, we have a limited funds and we have infinite needs. And as I move forward as interim town administrator, I'm really realizing how bad of shape these buildings are in, and the need is great.
And we're not even talking about the fire station, right? So there's another building.
Right, and the fire station is moving too, but that's gonna stay where it is, it's not gonna be able to be combined.
I'm not disagreeing either way. I'm just concerned that time keeps marching on. I, I'm not disagreeing either way, I'm just concerned, uh, that time keeps marching on. And there's very little to show for it, other than some personal time that people put into it and now wonder why.
And I think we need to have, that's what, we're kinda, we need to be able to work together, right? To Debbie's point, and, you know, getting people to work together for the greater good, um, will hopefully help that, right? So we need to get the groups together and everyone to agree, especially after the study, then it will help us move forward.
To be honest, we, I wasn't planning on having this conversation tonight. This was just, I, you know what I mean, but you're all here and we were, we were moving the, um, the agenda to Monday night's meeting. So this was not a planned discussion, but, um, I'm, most of you probably know me, I'm pretty transparent and I speak my mind openly. And so this is something that's been on my mind. I haven't even spoken to the Building Committee or, or, or any of them. Um, because it's, it's really not me, it's, it's the board. And I haven't even spoken to all the board members, and so this is news to some of them too. So, um, I, I think it's just very preliminary right now. And I, I don't know that, the board hasn't made any decisions, but I think it's something that, in my opinion, I, even building a new building up here, if we put a new building up here, it may preclude a future building. So we say we're gonna build the COA, um, library building. And then we decide we do need the town hall and we, the town wants it to come up here. But we put this building in such a location that this building can't be built, there's no other room. And that, that's, that's a real reality, that, that's a mistake that would be costly to the town. And not a good, you know, we, I think most people's feeling is either the town hall stays where it is or it comes up centrally located on this campus. So we wouldn't wanna then be looking for another piece of land to be building a town hall if that's the case. So I think, like I said, I know, as the words come out of my mouth, I know the cringes that are going on, that we might need to wait and do some studies. Um, what I will tell you is that there are warrant articles to get the money to do these studies and hopefully we can move them pretty quickly, so that you don't waste more time. And I, I don't even know that that's the decision, but it'll be the decision of the board, probably talking to the Building Committee and also whether the town votes to spend the money on these things.
I, I see.
Grace Mederos from East Street Town. And, uh, my concern is, goes back to Article Three of the November meeting. It was voted at that meeting. Uh, the townspeople voted five hundred fifty thousand dollars to be added to the five hundred fifty thousand that had already been given to, for this project, for the senior center, back in two thousand nineteen. We'd already been waiting two years. And then at this Article Three said, go ahead, start planning for the COA building. And now here we are, we're not planning for a COA building, the way that it had been voted on at the town meeting. We're planning something completely different. We started in two thousand and nineteen saying we need a new building. The library started now, the towns, the town hall started now. We've been trying for two years. And now we're being told, you've got to wait for all these others. And it just hasn't seemed fair. Three years is a long time in the life of a senior citizen. My husband isn't here with me today because he said, Grace, you're wasting your time. You won't be around by the time we get the new building. And that's the way that a lot of seniors feel.
Well, we're listening, we're ha- we're not kicking it down the, we, we just wanna make sure we're making the right decision. And you're right, there were multiple articles that are approved and, and passed forward from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one. We acknowledge those, right? But they're, like, like anything else, we have to make sure that as we move forward, we're doing it systematically in a, in a proper way that benefits not just the seniors, the town as well. That's a mutual thing, we can all agree to that. To, to your point, we, we're not forgetting about the subcommittees and people's time. We, we appreciate your time and the effort you put into these things. But that's why we're pushing it for a couple more days, to make sure we understand everything, letter by letter. So when we're building brick by brick, it's the right way to do it. We don't wanna go backwards, right? When the COA was built, it was a modular building, they added on, added on, right? Maybe that wasn't the way to do it back then. That was the option we had, great. We don't want to make the same mistakes moving forward.
So I, I can only comment then, if I could, that it seems that the formation of the new Senior Center of Library Subcommittee, Joint Committee, because those two committees separately voted to go forward, might also be inappropriate. Because if we're talking about, well, we need an outside firm to give us a better idea of what we should actually do, what, what's the objective of this newly formed committee? What are they gonna succeed in? What, what are they gonna do before June thirtieth?
Yeah.
That's why it's kinda, we're trying to, we're gonna push it off to Monday, just because more and more people wanna be on it. And this is brand new. Like I said, this discussion was not planned for tonight.
Yeah. But I, I, I welcome it, right? So don't, don't take that the wrong way, because we welcome, we wanna hear the feedback, so.
That committee is, unless things have changed, it's supposed to be formulated of four people from the COA, four people from the library, four at-large individuals, and one selectman.
Correct, yeah.
So on that list, there's no way of knowing who represents what on the, that initial list of people.
We will make it clear for you when we, if, if, when that does happen on Monday, we can, uh, there are people that can fit in multiple roles for that. And that's a discussion the Selectmen will have to have if they move forward with that Subcommittee.
I, I was not on that committee, but what I don't understand is, what is this new committee going to do that the committees that he was on?
Well, that, that, I think that was the point that was just brought up, is that, you know, we have to kinda figure out what direction we're gonna go in. So does it even make sense to form a committee? And I guess that's part of the discussion for Monday, but if all of a sudden we decide, hey, these three, you know, these three need to come together and we have a board that's formed for only two, or they're separate, then it doesn't do us any good and we've wasted time for people, which is valuable, right? So, um, I, I guess that's something we'll have to talk a little bit further about, but.
Right. I think, I mean, one of the things that may happen is that you come together, you build your COA library building. Um, and, and one of the things that prompted this thought process for me is this building that we're in right now is twenty-two thousand square feet. Um, has a second floor to it. If we were to build a new COA library, similar in size, and you, you are, the COA library occupied the first floor, the second floor could definitely work for the town hall. So it may be something that we just build, uh, the COA library building, do the second floor, don't finish it as this building is not finished on the second floor, but that's our future town hall, if and when we can afford to finish that, right? So I, I don't want you to look at it like we're derailing the project. I just think there's a lot of scenarios that need to be thought out and planned correctly, so that when we do get moving, we just move. We know what we're doing and we go that way and we know we can afford it. Because there's a piece to this that people just don't wanna hear, that it's, how are we gonna pay for it as a, as a society, as a town? Nobody wants to hear that, yeah, by the way, we're gonna come and need to do a debt exclusion or an over, you know? So, um, I think that's probably all I can say for now. But that's what prompted me thinking like, hey, this building, um, the twenty-two thousand square feet could house all three of our needs. And, and we could do it in a way that, like I said, maybe we do the library senior center first, we need the second floor unfinished, knowing that we, the town hall would have a place to go when it, if they needed to. Because I know both of you wanna be on the first floor, and I think that might work. So I don't think tonight, like I said, the timing to have this is, this is brand new conversation. The committee, that's on Monday night's agenda again.
And sure, it's, it's worth a couple, it's worth waiting a few days to be sure. All these unanswered questions have answers to them. So it's just, it's, it's, all we can meet on Monday and discuss it much further, so that we know what's going on.
So just ask, this topic was already tabled previously at the Selectment Meeting. So if it's, it's important, then we just asked, we continue it to be important.
It's important in the minutes.
And not table, it's important, we want it to be tabled again.
Yeah. I just, I just want you to understand that we real, and I can't say, I don't want to speak over him. I truly just want it to be done once and done, boy, I, I truly need that, right? We don't want, I don't want the band-aid applied on anything, and I keep saying it, but it's true, and that's why I'm saying. I just want, I just hope that we can, if it's done, done right, and have a smile on all their faces for the ribbon cut, so. That's it. Thank you.
That's all I had.
Yes.
The space. Uh, I gave it all to Margaret.
The ones that they're talking about.
Get ready, she know. Tell me, yes.
Okay.
Just.
Okay.
I think you sent it, did you send it by email or?
I did, I did.
Yeah, I didn't print it. I didn't even get that. It's not in my stack.
Um, yes. All right, having this forum, I have some, I'm seeing six oh five, I'll call the three committee meeting order.
Hey, everyone, um, welcome. So we're gonna, we have, um, we're gonna start with, um, Board of Assessors. Um, uh, anyone, I think we'll, we'll do what worked last time. Can you come up and ask any questions, any major changes? You can let us know, obviously, this stuff's a level fund, if we don't really go over it. So, um, does anyone have any questions?
Come up to the hot seat.
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry, I should probably mention that too. You get the hot seat up here, my friend.
Who is the hot seat?
You can sit, you want him to sit here?
She doesn't wanna break the camera.
So, this, I think everyone has the, the listing book where it's, uh, one forty-one, so.
So just give us an overview of the budget and where your increases are this year?
Okay, uh, major increase is the, uh, it's all contractual increases, okay? Um, personnel is up by thirty-three hundred and twenty-nine dollars, that's contractual. Um, then on the revow, uh, the five hundred and eighty dollars, that is, uh, a charge for a license from Capino's for the data. And on number two, that's the, um, that's an increase in his cost for doing the evaluations every year.
So you're on budget one forty-two rebound, right?
Good. And that's it.
Does anyone, Finance Committee?
We, we did, we just, we're, um, the senior clerk increase was three thousand. You're saying it's contractual for that much? We just questioned that.
Well, there's two, we have two people in here.
Right, you have one listed Assistant Assessor at one thirty-two and the Senior Clerk at three thousand.
Well, that's the new person, that's the new person. That's the part-time individual that was not in for a full year this year, it's only for a partial year. And that also is contractual because of the, the upgrade coming July first for the new, uh, contract.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, thank you.
I'm off the hot seat?
Any questions? You did.
All right, look at that.
Can I use the water and sewer, so we got that?
Oh, yeah, sorry, sorry.
Let me go ahead, you have the fold. Let Bob watch it. You want us in the water and sewer? Oh, I don't care. You've got it here, right?
I have it.
All right. Can you put this in this?
Four forty. Four forty, it doesn't have a number, probably very handy.
Six twenty.
That's the fund. So, um, it's a Department four fifty, but it's gonna be a special article for their operating budget. You should have a separate package for that.
This one, wait.
It's in there too.
That I just gave you. It's like this. Is that what you just gave me in the queue then? It's that one?
Yeah.
Great, we're ready for you.
Well, I mean, it is what it is. You guys have questions, ask, you can ask the questions. I mean, that's the budget. Um, and we had very good guidance, as usual, this year from our town accountant, who guides us through this process, being an enterprise fund.
Yeah. Finance Committee, you guys have any question, any comments, concerns? Debbie, you don't have any?
No, so I'm going to.
Yeah, I mean, nothing, speaking of that. We wanted to get you a couple extra steps in, sir, so we, uh, we had you go over, get that thing back over. And there's, now he's asked you any questions.
You know, I need the exercise. I understand it.
I'm not implying that at all.
No, that's all right. Huh?
Uh-oh.
Says, uh, overtime and downtime, each one says one thirty-six.
You're talking about this sheet here, Bob?
No.
All right, well, I got mine on a shorter sheet, but what, what's, what's the?
Anyway, it, it just says, it says one or two additional gross overtime thousand dollars. And it says one or two addition, additional gross overtime comp time a thousand dollars. And I'm, I'm just wondering, are those both the same?
No, they're not the same. Uh, overtime would be actual pay. Comp time would be to cover the extra hours to pay, to pay the individual, correct?
So, um, the regular gross overtime is if they work in excess of forty hours and they wish to get paid for that time in that specific pay period. We also have a provision within the collective bargaining agreement that they can accumulate their comp time up to forty hours and get paid out for that at the end of the year. So that is just tracked separately for budget purposes. It's still overtime, one is paid during the paid period, one can be accumulated and paid out at the end of the fiscal year, up to thirty hours.
So what would all the time entail if you do what, what would they?
We have one.
If there was an emergency or?
Well, yeah, if you get called out in the middle of the night or you, you have to work, we have a water break or something and you have to work overtime, the person has to work those hours. I mean, we only have one outside person in the, uh, and we have one clerical person. Generally speaking, the clerical person wouldn't have overtime.
Yeah.
But the outside person could have overtime, yes.
Yeah, okay. And that's what you've had, that's what you've budgeted, so. But it could go more than that, I mean, if you had an emergency.
But it could go more than that, and then we'd have to request a. But it could go more than that, and then we'd have to request a transfer, I would say, from our reserve fund. In fact, you guys should be seeing a request for transfer.
Did one.
Coming up.
Anything else? How long is White Water gonna be with us?
Share.
I don't know if it's gonna be forever, but they're gonna be with us for a little while.
Yeah. It seems that they've been.
They're the superintendent of, of, of assistant.
Process, but at some particular point, you know, what they're asking, as far as I can see, as far as my knowledge, is what they're asking is, is, uh, I think in the present situation at the town, it could be almost impossible.
Almost impossible for what?
For, you know, for the, uh, what they're saying about the drainoff, that was explained to us before.
I don't know what you're talking about.
White Water, they were concerned about, uh, water in the streets, and where, where did the water go, did it go down into, directly into the bay or the catch, catch basins and all this other stuff? And am I, am I correct in assuming that that's what White Water's purpose is, that's why we're paying them?
White Water is a, White Water is a company that does all our analysis and reports to the D E P.
No, that's, that, that's.
Nothing to do with where the water goes.
And I also wanted to find.
So what are they, what are they reporting to?
They report all of the, they have to sample the water every day, and they take a sample every day around town.
Okay.
And then they analyze it for chemicals.
Well, they don't analyze, they, they send it out to be analyzed.
Yeah, well, they send it out to be analyzed, and they do all.
Are these water surface affairs, are they separate wells?
No, no, there are different points in town where the water come, the water, we, water, we don't have wells. Okay, we have water that comes in from Far River, and we have water that comes in from New Bedford.
Okay.
Everybody that has a well is on their own.
Okay, so you got the town water.
Town water is all that they do.
Okay.
That's all we, that's all we deal with, is town water.
So I think that's, that's a discussion for another point, but, I mean, I mean, it might be, I don't know if we should continue on with it.
I, I don't understand what you're.
I'm saying, do we wanna continue on with a conversation about what they?
No, no, it was a question, it was asked.
Oh, no, I know, yeah, absolutely, I'm just trying to agree with you. That's all. No disrespect, sir. Does it, any other questions for this gentleman? No? Alright, thank you.
Well said.
I appreciate it. Alright, so next is, um, health inspection.
So skip that.
Alright, so we're gonna skip.
Why do you don't have Hawaii highways?
Alright, so yeah, we'll go to, uh, highway. So Chuck, you're in the hot seat.
Thank you.
Thank you, just have a great night.
Thanks, Doc.
You're in the hot seat?
Well, anyone.
I'll sit next to you. Say, say, shoot him.
Alright.
Good evening.
It's a three funnest, right?
Yeah, I'm gonna have a good budget, snow and ice and street picks. Four twenty, how did he get four twenty? On our regular operating budget, um, I did ask for a pretty significant increase in repairs and maintenance of roadways. That should be pretty self-explanatory with the state of the world affairs and the rising price of everything. I think overall, we asked for an additional fifty-one thousand dollars over the total operating budget from this year, this year compared to last year. Again, most of it should be pretty self-explanatory with the price of oil being what it is, it's driven the price of everything through the, um, piece of pipe that we could buy last year for two hundred dollars, currently it's five hundred dollars, if you can get it. Tires, uh, tire that once was two hundred dollars is now five hundred dollars.
One more.
One more. Uh, motor oils, e- everything, everything is exponentially more expensive. I don't think what we're asking for is, uh, over the top. I mean, neutral lines, we asked for repairs of vehicles, we asked for an additional five thousand dollars.
Are you anticipating more repairs or just the increase of services?
It's, it's.
It's mostly the price of services.
One of our huge problems is all the newer trucks, um, we can't work on. They're just basically rolling computers. So anytime there's a hiccup, which happens all the time, the trucks get sent usually back to the international dealership. And it's just crazy money, you know? You know, a, a muffler for, Mr. Aldison would know, a muffler for an F four fifty, which is one of our small dump trucks, is fifty-five hundred dollars for the, for a muffler, which is, that's, you, you know, you don't shop around, you can't put, you have to put on that muffler, you don't have an option, um, so.
Part of the emissions system.
Yeah.
Senses in it.
It is what it is.
If you have to replace the whole system, it's eight thousand dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's.
You can't pick that up.
No, you can't, it's just crazy, crazy money, you know?
And this is on the newer vehicles.
Well, that's, um, this last past year, we repurposed a fire truck, mainly because it was in halfway decent shape. I couldn't see it go into the junkyard. We repurposed it because it's, it's a nineteen eighty-six, and again, Mr. Aldison, it's mechanical. If something breaks, you can fix it with a zip tie and some bubble gum, and you can make it work. The newer trucks, if they die, they're dead. Um, we've spent, there's one line here, other purchase surfaces, services, we bumped that up quite a bit.
So what goes into that line?
Um, that is a lot of things. We have vehicles towed way more than we ever have, uh, because those newer trucks, when they die, they're dead, you know? Um, and when they have to go to the dealership in Warwick, uh, they have to be towed there, so that's five hundred bucks of whack. In that line, um, our drug testing for our people, um, we, we use a company called Speedy Rooter, based in town, to jet out drain lines. That's usually five or six hundred bucks every time we use them, so that comes out of that. But a big portion of that is having big wheel tow vehicles to said dealership or back to the yard, or, uh, we've probably paid Big Wheels five thousand dollars this last year. You know, it's nothing that you can plan, it's just, hey, the truck's dead on Route twenty-four with a load of asphalt, what do you wanna do? You don't have a choice, you know, you just can't leave it there, peel the town stickers off and just walk away from it, so. It's, um, that, that's a num, that's a line that we use quite frequently. Like I said, the biggie was the repairs and maintenance to roadways. I mean, that should be pretty obvious, we right now, I don't even know what we're paying for asphalt. We were at sixty-four dollars and change, I'm guessing we're probably anywhere between seventy-five and eighty dollars a ton. Price of oil, it's, it's, it's oil, it's oil drive and, you know, you know, home heating oil right now is over six dollars and fifty cents a gallon. Who knows where it's going? Yeah, and, and, but it's gonna get, home heating oil right now, it's, it's not a huge thing because it's May. But if the prices are this high come next December, we're all in trouble, we're in real trouble. But that's my operating, but, I mean, basically the budget I use every day. As far as, um, personnel, that's all contract, contractual. So that, that's not really too crazy. That number might decrease, uh, once we have our personnel issues all ironed out, so hopefully that'll get cut some. Which is fine by me, but, um, that's a day-to-day budget.
Your fuel comes out of communication?
Yes. Yeah, we, we've, we've tried even, when things started going crazy, you know, just make a point to. Do you wanna go to Dunkin' Donuts, take your own truck, don't take my truck, you know, just to try to save wherever we can.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and it, and it, I don't know that it makes a, a big deal, but, uh, you know, we, we have an eye on it.
It'd probably be insignificant in the long run, but.
Every dollar, to me, every dollar the town saves, you know, is gonna help us in the long, you know?
Like I said, in the long run, if you add it all up, maybe you're talking about a, a minuscule percent, but it's still a minuscule percent.
Yeah. So that's that budget. Any other questions? Okay. Um, we kicked the snow. We've, we've, we've been at a hundred fifty thousand, I think, two years, Ken?
No, just this year.
Just this year?
Yep.
Um, we were at a hundred thousand for a bunch of years. I was asking to bump it up another fifty thousand to two hundred thousand. And snow and ice, it doesn't really matter what the number is because.
No, it don't.
We pretty much can spend whatever we need to. This year, to date, we're at, I think, three oh four that we've spent. It wasn't a horrible winter, we plowed maybe six times, we had, I think, forty-two inches of snow throughout the entire season. But a lot of that goes to, um, sand and salt, which, uh, again, it's, it's, it's a necessary evil and, um, I'm afraid that if the fuel prices stay at the level that they're at come next year, we're probably gonna have to give our subcontractors yet another increase, just to keep them on board. Because, again, they were paying two dollars and fifty cents a gallon, now they're gonna be paying six. Diesel fuel right now, I know in Middletown, Rhode Island, it's seven, seven oh two a gallon. That's a lot to ask, um, anybody to absorb that type of.
You do it.
Increase, you know, and.
Can't do it.
Yeah, no, nobody loves plowing snow that much. So that's snow and ice. Uh, we're asking for the fifty thousand dollar increase, but it's not, it's not critical one way or another, because it's not really gonna affect, uh, the operations.
Once you go up, you can't go down.
Correct. And I think probably if we average it out, we've probably been averaging about, in the last year, I think we spent two ninety-five, this year was three oh four. Again, next winter may be forty degrees in Barmy the whole winter, or we could have snow in October and have it stop snowing until May. So it, it's, that's, that's a target you can't even come close to mailing down. That's snow and ice. And the last one is streetlights. Again, it is what it is, um. I'm not sure what the price of electricity is gonna do over the next year with everything going crazy, so. We're not asking for any kind of increase there, we're actually asking for less. Uh, we've gotten, new streetlights have all been, mostly have all been changed, and they're running much more efficient, so.
It's insane to see compared to what we spent.
Yeah, u- usually, I think it was like eleven thousand a year we used the budget.
Eleven thousand for almost, almost eight years.
Yeah, and then.
Then things started, we started shutting some of them off.
Well, it, it, that, and it, I mean, those LEDs, they run so much more efficient that, like you said, we're at less than half of what we were.
Yeah.
Five years ago, so, um, I can't imagine that number's gonna go through the roof. And I know the price of electricity is gonna go up like everything else, but, um, I think, I think I'd be comfortable with the number that we put forward.
Yeah.
That makes sense. Pretty straightforward in that one.
Yes.
Any questions or anyone? Hey Chuck, I think you're on the hot seat.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
That's what I'm here for. Thank you very much.
Oh. So, should we? Yeah, that works. Alright, so Kevin, you're on the hot seat. What number are we on?
Four thirty-three, trash collection.
Trash collection, yeah.
That really is the hot seat.
Four thirty? Four thirty-three. Sorry, I should announce that I apologize. So Kevin, obviously, saying before, anything that has any major change, you can announce, anything that's level funded or anything you don't, to go through, so.
Okay, sure.
Unless there's a question.
Yeah.
Yes, there's a question. Uh, we can start with the trash collection and disposal budget. So I have two budgets, that and the inspection, health inspection services, so we'll start with the trash. Uh, virtually every item other than the trash, other supplies, has gone up. Most of these are based on a contract that was signed last year. So the first item would be just for the curbside trash collection and recycling, they have a contractual increase. So that's, that is represented, uh, by that number there, the four hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Uh, the next, uh, item would be a, a transportation fee. Within the contract, the trash hauling contract is a fuel escalator. Uh, at the time that it was bid, it was bid at three dollars a gallon. Within that contract, uh, should fuel go up, they are allowed to charge us for the difference over the three dollars. Based on the six dollars per gallon for diesel, to use a round number, and that's the number that the, uh, that Borges Brothers will be using. Now, uh, that comes out to twenty-three thousand four hundred dollars. We had budgeted ten thousand, uh, for every year, for the past several years. We did in two thousand nineteen have sixteen thousand in there, uh, so this represents approximately thirteen thousand dollar, uh, increase on that. Now, if fuel costs do go down, then that escalator goes down also. But this is the number that was given to us that that would be based on.
The original contract was based on three dollars again?
Mm-hmm, yeah. Of course, the next one, we have acceptance fees at disposal facility, how much we have to pay per ton. Uh, we, we originally budgeted eighty to ninety dollars a ton, we've been given an estimate of seventy-five dollars a ton based on two thousand ton, which is again based on our collections over the course of time. We're happy to hear that it's, it's, it's down a, a bit. But it does represent a significant increase, uh, to the tune of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that is a relative fixed cost in that we have to, costs for disposal have gone up and acceptance of the trash, we don't have control over that. Single stream recycling, um, we've based it on ninety dollars a ton and eight hundred and ninety ton, which is again the volume that we've seen utilized. Folks in free time have done a good job of taking their recycling out of the, uh, general trash stream and putting it into the recycling stream. But with that comes some increased cost on that, uh, we were able to get that costing down to, uh, ninety dollars a ton. Our hauler was able to get it down below the hundred dollar a ton mark. So that represents, uh, the number of eighty thousand dollars. Then we have the trash bags, the printed trash bag, colored bags. We do go through an awful lot of them. We'll, we'll probably be okay to get through the rest of this year, we're hoping we don't have to make another order. But there is a cost increase based on their contract of five percent, and it's also based on, uh, usage, increased usage that we've seen, so we have to make sure that we order those. And then the final line item has stayed the same, it's two hundred twenty-five dollars, that's typically for mailing, should we have to do something relative to the trash collection. So that stayed the same. So that brings the total budget number to seven hundred eighty thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars. And again, most of those things are contract, uh, contractual increases that, uh, we don't have any kind of control over. It's not like I can look to find another trash hauler, or, we're in a contract. Again, I have to give credit, the trash haul has worked with us. They understand that we are. Again, I have to give credit, the trash haul has worked with us. Uh, they understand that we are, uh, money is not growing on trees here. So they explored other options to take the recycling stream, uh, and to reduce that number for us, so they, they were able to do that. But they also don't have any control over the fuel costs, so. Are there any questions on that budget?
I got a question.
Sure.
Kevin, uh, your line says we spent about forty-eight thousand dollars on trash bags, it's five percent increase.
Correct.
Do you, off the top of your head, and maybe you folks know, what's the revenue? Do we get revenue back on those trash bags? Does that go back into the seven hundred eighty thousand dollars, or is that something?
It goes back into the general fund, right, Kim? No, Kim would know.
Yeah, so it is collected in the general fund, um, I was just looking at the revenue today. So it doesn't offset directly against this appropriation, but to date. We have collected two hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred dollars.
Is that per year, Kim? Was that?
Well, that's to date, so that's through, um, through April.
Through April, yeah.
So.
And that goes back into the general fund?
Correct.
Which essentially pays for some.
Helps to fund this, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
So, I do have a question.
Sure.
Just looking at the trash disposal, they, the fees have actually gone down per ton? Is that correct?
The acceptance fees at the disposal facility?
Yeah, did that go down?
No.
No.
No, no, that's going up.
Budgeted at eighty to ninety per ton?
We originally budgeted eighty to ninety because we were waiting to get numbers from the disposal facilities.
Okay.
They took some time to get back to us.
What are we paying now?
I was gonna say, it's in the sixties.
Yeah, we're paying sixty-five a ton right now.
So, um, it does represent a significant increase, but not as significant as we were originally told a few months ago. That it could potentially be ninety dollars a ton.
And I think we're gonna be over, over budget from, from last year. I don't know if you have current numbers, but I think we're gonna run over that.
Um, I do have current numbers, um, so currently for, um. The acceptance fees, um, we budgeted, uh, ninety-three-five for the year. We're at eighty-one for eighty, and that is only through March.
Yeah, so I think we're gonna run over lashes budget at sixty-five dollars, cause we have more time, so. But this, the increase should cover the new time and the new rate. One, one hundred, you need to get a new one. That's why he originally budgeted one eighty, he dropped it down to one fifty.
Right, do you have the one fifty or the one eighty paper?
The one fifty.
Okay, yeah, that's why the original budget had one eighty in it based on the, up to ninety, so. Yes, yes. I'd rather it be confused and go down than be confused and go up, right?
Fair enough.
Any other questions? Next budget would be the inspection services budget. So you're gonna notice some, some changes within that also. Five, ten. Five, ten.
Yeah, but they, they're just getting the newest one.
So we have, uh, health inspector, part-time, full-time salary and wages, we have, uh, increase of ninety-eight thousand, forty dollars. That, well, that's the budget item, excuse me. Next, we have a contractual increase for the staff, the clerical staff, and that, that's represented there with the twenty-eight thousand, three hundred, sixty dollars, so. Any questions?
Yeah, what's, uh, the health inspector? Who is the health inspector?
That's me.
And it's, you, it's, it's a full-time job?
The health inspector? Oh, gosh, yeah.
Yeah, for example, you, you inspect what?
Well, I'll give you an example. Currently, what, what, what do I do in general? So septic, well, we'll say, we'll start with septic systems. Currently, I have forty septic systems in various stages of permitting.
Okay, but you also do like restaurants and?
Yep, food inspections, minimum housing inspections, pool inspections. Uh, we'll do the federal and state inspections for housing at schools, I'll give you another example. I have twenty-six inspections alone at Crystal Springs for their housing and their individual kitchens within the units over there. That would be on top of the kitchen inspection that needs to get done twice a year.
How about gas, you do those too?
Gas inspections? No, no, no. No, that would be, I'm assuming the sealer awaits a measure.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah, yeah, no, I don't do that.
See, now that's different.
Right, so, um, the beach, uh, trash, uh, the boat ramp, uh, again, minimum housing complaints. Yeah, there's enough to do.
No, no.
Yeah, no, no, I know that, I know Bob.
I'm asking because the, the question's been asked and I don't know how that is.
Okay, oh.
Was this previously not a full-time position?
No, it's been a full-time position for years.
Not that many years, really, actually, well, seven years, eight years?
Seven or eight years, yeah.
Yeah, before that, it was a part, actually, the building inspector.
Before that, it was a shared, and I, it was a shared, he shared duties between the building department and the board of health. So he was the, acted as the health agent and the, and the, uh, the building commissioner. And, uh, what I can tell you is the job, I mean, nobody needs to know, but we've had the pandemic over the last two years, so public health is a huge issue. That we have to deal with, school inspections, mobile food trucks inspections. I have the list of, here of all inspections that we have to do and.
So all the inspections, I mean, all the inspections you're doing now were done before, correct?
I have not gone back and looked through the files to make sure that all those inspections were done, Bob. Uh, my assumption would be that, yes, the folks that were there before me have done their job. That's my assumption.
That's not, uh, I'm not trying to allude to the fact that somebody wasn't.
Okay.
I was just trying to figure out, all of these inspections, are they current, you know, in other words? I can understand with COVID, the health inspections of schools, I can understand that, but all the other inspections have to be done anyway. I always thought that the building, like the building commissioner, uh, did septic inspections.
No, he's not certified to do that, he can't do that. It's outside of his purview.
Did you? Okay, so you, you have to be certified for that.
You don't, you should be certified to do that, which is why we have outside help that, that had been helping with, with some of these, these, uh, septic inspections. I am currently enrolled in a class that will start in the fall, soil evaluation. I do have my experience on conservation commission and, and, uh, and planning board relative to septic installation, so I have a pretty good handle on it. So, that alone, like I said, currently in my office, I have forty septic systems in various stages of permitting. And I've got another half dozen perk tests scheduled in the next two weeks. And we're just getting into the busy season for septic systems. Every time a house gets sold, typically there's a title five inspection. When that's done, it seems like more often than not, they are failing. That's another, uh, issue also, is that the DEP and the state are, are giving more and more duties to local boards of health. It's a phenomenon within, uh, surrounding communities, within the Commonwealth.
Well, they can use you instead of using state inspectors.
If we were to rely on state inspectors, I think we'd be hard pressed to get service.
How do we get them?
Right, right, that, that, that's, that's true, Bob, right? And, and so, uh, you know, we've had several health inspectors over the last several years, uh, not to mention, uh. And, and a lot of times that they have left is because of the, uh, the amount of work that's, that, that, it's required. And, um, it's difficult, you know, it's difficult to try to manage all that stuff. So you're running around a lot, quite honestly. Like I say, one, on top of everything.
They can also change the mandate anytime.
Well, that's what's happened to, to Bob, quite honestly, is they're starting to look at more and more treatment systems for septic systems. Which means more and more septic systems that would have ordinarily passed are failing. Uh, there's a requirements now typically with, with any new building construction, that the board of health needs to look at these and sign off. Because what we've found is over the course of time, because there was no mandate or it just maybe didn't get done or slipped through cracks, I don't know. But you have situations where you have a three-bedroom system installed, but you may in fact have a four or five-bedroom house, non-compliance. So, uh, compliance is a big deal, like I said, we, uh.
I'm not trying.
No, I understand, Bob.
I, I, again, but well.
You're actually doing me a favor to.
You know what you're doing, but again, you know, my, my question wasn't specifically about what, you know, what you're doing.
Yeah.
You yourself personally, plus as a group there, you know, between you and the building instructor, who has purview over what?
Yeah, no, he has nothing to do with septic systems. He is strictly, well, he is strictly zoning, and I don't wanna speak for him, but he's strictly zoning and, and building code enforcement. I mean, he's also the building commissioner responsible for facilities, but, um.
Normally, normally the building commissioner wears a bunch of hats.
Yep, and he does.
More than one hat.
Right, right.
When it comes to that.
Yeah, I don't think people realize that I have, uh, there's over forty restaurant inspections, have to be done twice a year, and that's, uh.
You can't get a drink and tell them forty restaurants.
Yeah, yeah, and again, I should say forty food, food inspections, right, so most of them are gonna be restaurants. But then we'll have kitchen inspections, mobile, mobile food inspections, we have the camps, we do pool inspections. Uh, you know, all the camps are gonna get ready, I say all the camps, there's two or three in town, depending if they open up another one on the other side of town. Those all require inspections, uh, so, yeah, there's a, there, there is a lot to do.
I, I do have a question, so, so your position is full-time and then you have a part-time position in here, is that a new position for this year?
We've, no, we've had, we've been utilizing, the town is utilizing part-time when we didn't have a full-time. So we've had two part-timers, sometimes three, depending on what their specialty was and what their availability was. Oftentimes, we've used retired personnel, which means they can only work so many hours per week, and their desire is to only work so many hours a week.
And that was when you didn't have a full-time role established? So you're opting to keep the full-time and the part-time?
Yes, I'm opting to keep myself as the full-time, yes.
Yep, and then there's a part-time position as well.
Yes, and the part-time position also. There was that, there was that much work. Not to mention, uh, that, uh, we have, well, we have a business in town that is going to require, I'm pretty sure, soon enough. A, a huge amount of oversight relative to public health, uh, with Excel. Yeah, okay, so, um, and that's another, again, I get a, I get a complaint today, I'm chasing that around for an hour, right? So you, you never know, I've scheduled things and I've had to put them off because something else comes up, you know. Three trash complaints today, two minimum housing complaints today, septic system and a restaurant inspection, it, so, um.
How long do those, like, how long, a standard inspection, how long does that take?
So, um, a restaurant, so let's say profile, just to profile the other day, that's a, that's, that's a pre, opening inspection, right?
And you probably have to go multiple times.
Yeah, I will, right, so I go the, I'll go the first time to make sure that they are fit to be opened, right? Coolers are at the right temperature, water is at the right temperature, hand washing stations, just, uh, how are you gonna be storing things? Just general overall inspections that way. And then once they get into operation, we have to do two a year after that. Right.
Two a year per?
So that inspection the other day probably took me, it's a rather large facility, it took me probably an hour and a half to do. Then you got the paperwork, you do some call down, you know, a couple hours for that. But I had an example a couple of weeks ago or last week where we had a difficult inspection that resulted in, uh, a closure. And that inspection alone took almost three hours. And then the follow-up, the next day inspections, so that probably is gonna take, that whole deal probably takes anywhere between six and seven hours to, to do all that. And that's just the one.
And I'm not trying to speak for Kevin, but something else that you should bring up is Dale's qualifications. Allow us, with Kevin still going through process of, you know, getting some certifications he's talking about. Um, Dale is certified, so Dale, we're not having a guy outside person to come in and do certain inspections that Kevin's unable to do at this point until he's completely certified. So having Dale is also next to that and helps things continue to operate smoothly, on top of how busy he is. Because of all the different things he has to go through.
By the way, that, that complaint, it got cleaned up today.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we get, we get all sorts of complaints, people's trash.
You know, part of the problem too is with the COVID, they're not offering trainings right away. I was told there was several hundred people waiting lists just to get into the soil evaluation class. You know, the good news is I have a lot of experience with that, with twenty-three years being on the conservation commission and understanding soils and understanding how they work. So, uh, but Jared's right, there are certain things, particularly if you're gonna get into the enforcement side of things. I am certified on the serve safe side for food inspections and all, uh, which is why I utilize Dale, uh, more for, uh, septic if I need to. I can't be in two places at once, so that's, that's the way, and he doesn't work, you know, all day, he works for like three hours in the morning. That's why we try to schedule our perk tests, uh, but even, even with an installation of a, of a, uh, septic system. You'll have the initial septic, you'll have the initial request for a perk test that you review, then you'll go out and do the perk test. Sometimes those can take an hour, sometimes as little as fifteen minutes, but other times it might take an hour and a half. Uh, once that's done, that's after we review the title five report based on inspection and, uh, then we review the plan once they're submitted. Then we'll go out and do the open hole inspection, then we'll do a halfway or midway inspection as they're putting the, the, uh, the infrastructure in, if you will. Then we'll do a final inspection, then we review the ASBIL, then we issue a certificate of compliance.
So that's like a handful for just one septic.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And how many new ones do we do?
I have, currently in my office, I have forty at various stages of permitting, and I have another six perk tests lined up over the next couple of weeks. And we are now getting into the busy season. And as I was making my point, you know, the housing market is what it is. We have a new subdivision with, that's, that's been coming to town now, right, so there's, there's twelve for that. Uh, and like I said, every time a house gets sold, uh, a title five is done. And quite honestly, you know, most septic systems, if you can get twenty years out of it, you've done well. If you really take care of it and you're in a good spot, then you might get a little bit more. Uh, but I just reviewed one today, he's gonna be on, in twenty years, he'll be on his third septic system. So, folks, take care of your septic systems. Okay.
So all of these fees that you're getting, what does that constitute overall for that, that whole fund?
I'm sorry?
The, the fees that you're collecting goes back to the general.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
How much are we getting for that? You don't know that, I'll talk to you.
I do not, I'm so sorry.
I think you lie to us.
Unfortunately, I don't have board of health separate, um, but overall, we budget, um. Fifteen, fifteen thousand, no, twenty thousand in fees, um, that come in, so clearly, we spend a lot more than we get back.
Looks like we should be increasing our fees.
Well, you could talk to the board of health about that.
I, I don't know who he is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, certain things I feel like, I, I mean, this is me personally speaking, it's, you know, we're, we're doing a service for the town, right? So we're not aiming to make money. I understand your point to, to recruit. I know, I know you're not a profit. I know, I understand exactly that, so I'm, I'm alluding to that, that.
So a new septic system, the total overall fee's gonna be three hundred dollars. That'll include, you know, we charge a, a fifty dollars for a title five review. So all these steps typically have a fee associated with them. But you're, you're not the first one to suggest, and not just for board of health, but for others that we may wanna consider.
Yeah, I guess that's a thing we'll have to discuss.
The town does it, again, Bob, you would know this, you've been around for a while, longer than I have. That every so many years, the town has to consider raising their fees because inflation has gone up, cost of doing business has gone up. So, if that's something that the board of health considers, I'm, I'm sure that I'll do whatever they tell me to do.
Yeah, you don't wanna, you don't wanna put a pin in the balloon. Any other questions?
What's that?
I, I have one question, so, looking at your labor worksheet, and then looking at your, your budget form for operating increase. And you have an other comp for nine hundred dollars, I know it's only nine hundred dollars, but it's a question. Your own writing, you're stating you're a new health agent, but you're asking for a longevity, cause you're a twenty-year employee. But you're only a health agent six months a year, something like that, right?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't, I don't know that I'm asking, I was told that, that, that is what my longevity would be, so I should put that on there. Which is actually less than my longevity that I was getting before, as a union employee.
Okay, so that's contractual?
It's in the bylaw.
It's in the bylaw.
That's, that was my question.
Okay. I went over and asked Pam, and this is the number that she told me, so that's the number that I put down.
Right, so even though his role as a health agent is new, um, he is still a twenty-year employee, so that, that longevity carries over. However, the bylaw is less than the union contract.
Excellent.
So he's actually getting a pay cut.
Sorry, you hear that, Ken?
No, no worries. No worries.
It was the only thing that kinda stuck out.
No, no, you're right. And I think I originally had actually forgotten to put it in there because it didn't dawn on me, I didn't, so.
You get it, it's yours, it's yours.
I guess. Uh, she had to, Kevin had to come over and tell me when there's a clothing allowance too today, so. So.
Just an update on the revenue, um, for Board of Health, you guys have brought in almost thirty-seven thousand.
Thirty-seven.
Um, through the end of April, so. You're not quite covering your budget.
Not, no, no, we're not quite covering the budget, no. Sure.
As you get up to speed, do you think that'll pick up as far as any old licenses and everything else?
As revenue will pick up?
Right, well, not just revenue, but inspections and everything else, once you get more attuned to it and everything.
No, we're doing all the inspections that we need to do. I mean, it's, there, there's no inspections that are going undone, as a matter of fact, I. I, I, I started out, again, folks, a twenty year employee, but I am new to the position. Um, I've tried to hit the ground running, I've initiated inspections that were, had been, I don't wanna say put off. But again, with COVID and restrictions of going into places, some places not being open, uh, having part time officials. Uh, had to prioritize what was more important. Uh, and some would argue that, you know, making sure you get over and do multiple restaurant inspections may not be as important as. Making sure that that septic system that's bubbling out of the ground doesn't get, get taken care of.
Do you like to eat?
So, uh, I've initiated inspection schedules, I've been very, very proactive with that. Uh, to make sure that everybody is in compliance, and if they're not, we get them into compliance. So next item we have, this, no, everything good? Next item we have would be the health workers' part time salaries, that's for our public health nurse. And that's an eighteen thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Representing a two percent increase that I think everybody got, right? What's that?
We're proposing that, nobody's actually gotten it.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're proposing in the budget. To get two percent increase for non-contractual and union, and union employees, okay. Health other wages, the COVID, we are not utilizing that anymore, and that's not because COVID has disappeared. It's because I think that funding source has, has, has been exhausted, I think that was through, is that through the federal government, some of that money?
Yeah, and the state had emergency basically, but that was, um, exhausted from March fifteenth.
So again, the health longevity deserves nine hundred dollars. I have a uniform allowance, a clothing allowance of five hundred dollars. So the health repairs and maintenance of vehicles, we had several line items, at least three, I believe, that were all vehicle related. One was separate just for tires, another one was separate just for the inspection sticker. So we proposed zeroing those budget line items out and just adding to the twelve hundred dollars. Uh, or, or adding to the thousand that we had budgeted last year to twelve hundred. We typically don't spend much out of it, I think the biggest expenditure over the last several years has probably been tires, although there was an issue with the key. We have a special key fob, so that might've come out of there also, but last year, the only thing that we spent out of it was the inspection fee at thirty-five dollars. So, uh, in fairness, I don't know what year the Jeep is, but it needs help. Um, so, you know, maybe in the next couple few years, we may be looking to get, uh, you know, a, another vehicle, whether from another department or, or. Through purchase, but, um, it's, I would anticipate that we will probably use a bit more on maintenance. That tells me right there that there was no oil change done on it, so, uh, and if it was, it was done at the highway department, so. Um, but we won't spend it if we don't need it. And we've budgeted a fifteen thousand, we're gonna keep the fifteen thousand in the.
Um, well, this was one thing that I wanted folks to, um, just consider. Um, originally, that fifteen thousand was put in this budget, um, to make improvements, um, to the town beach. I thought it should go into facilities, but at the time, it went in here. I'm not sure what the position is of, of the board as to whether the Board of Health's department will still be. Responsible for doing some type of improvement or upkeep at the beach. Um, but again, that was what this originally entered into the budget for, um. I'm not sure if that's still a practical point at this time.
This was, this was BK, before, this was BK before Kevin, I don't know, that's why I'm asking about the fifteen thousand, cause I had the same question.
Well, and actually, uh, quite honestly, they were able to do a lot of the improvements, I believe, prior to opening, um. In the previous year, um, they had to get, you know, like, um, those ropes that mark off the beach, they put up some concrete barriers. So that people weren't getting vehicles. Yeah, they think they probably add sand.
Chuck brought millions down there.
As I said, I think they brought millions, they may have brought some sand.
And I think they, they built some sort of shed or something like that. So I, I'm not sure if, if it's complete as to everything that was proposed to be done, um, or not, so. But that's, that's how this got in here, and you can see nothing's been used this year, so I don't know if it makes sense to have it in there.
Right, and I, I would take no exception to have it removed.
What that discussion, um, um, where that falls?
Who is doing, who made those repairs?
It was a joint effort between the selectmen's office and the highway and, um, facilities, I think, to kind of pull that all together. To kind of get it open, they needed signage down there for COVID, social distancing, that kind of stuff.
I don't think we still need a minimal budget for signs and miscellaneous things, maybe not fifteen thousand, but there's like, we just bought ropes and stuff. Uh, to do the, some stuff down there, so I'd like to see they have some budget left there. But I don't know that we have any planned big projects on the beach.
Yeah, that doesn't include, uh, lifeguards, does it? So there are no lifeguards at this beach?
No, we haven't had lifeguards.
But we have an attendant there, we have somebody that was there.
We haven't had lifeguards probably in fifteen years.
Um, you, the attendant is gonna be covered through the revolving fund.
Right, but I mean, that's, but there's, you know, just miscellaneous stuff in case that comes up.
I mean, maybe twenty-five, like all these big plans last year, that, that, um, the town administrator wanted that fifteen thousand.
So again, like you said, didn't want this budget.
Well, it's been done, it continues to get done right now, so discussion will be had as far as where the money's gonna come from moving forward. So we have a good idea, but we're just gonna iron that down, so there are things going in with the boat ramp and the beach and things like that. So like, like we said, the highway department's been doing things, state's doing things, there's a lot of moving parts, so we're just trying to figure that out. May stay, so, but I agree, yeah, we should have some things in here as far as signage and everything.
Do you wanna reduce that to like twenty-five hundred?
Could I just make one comment? You could also vote to just, um, transfer this to the revolving fund if that would be a better place for it to go. So it would just be a voted transfer that would go to the Long Pond Revolving Fund and then could be utilized that way. And you could increase the authorization to spend. I'm not sure if that made that more confusing.
We're a real big fan of revolving funds, to be, to be honest with you, just.
Well, we have one already. It would be useful there because we do have a lot of expenses at that boat ramp. Kevin, do you have any objection to that?
I do not.
The board to vote to move this to.
Well, I mean, you can leave it here, we would just call it a transfer to special revenue, boat ramp, uh, Long Pond Revolving. So it would still stay within this budget, but it would represent a transfer out of the general fund to the special revenue fund. And it would be utilized at Long Pond.
That puts that budget where?
It doesn't change the budget, uh, um, it doesn't change this budget, it's still staying here, it's being just transferred out to the revolving fund.
Okay, how much is, when it's transferred out, how much will the revolving fund go up, fifteen thousand dollars to what number?
Well, it depends on what else they collect for revenue from beach stickers and parking at the boat ramp. So I don't know how much it will go up, it will depend on what else they collect.
Okay, so we don't have a budget number for that?
It doesn't get budgeted.
That doesn't include the kiosk or whatever the hell that was gonna be.
The kiosk is twelve thousand, seven hundred dollars, and that's in, um, um, the money, I'm asking you to move the money. Out of reserve into that fund so I can spend it, that's before your board coming up, correct?
Alright, so I'm gonna, so you, the, a-again, if you're moving fifteen thousand dollars into that budget. Then the budget's increased by fifteen thousand dollars to a certain number, there's nothing in the budget now for the boat ramp.
The boat ramp is a revolving fund.
I understand, what, okay, at this particular juncture in the revolver, which boat are we looking at? How much money is in the?
I believe the boat ramp fund currently has around twenty-two thousand dollars in it. And I'm asking you to move twelve thousand, seven hundred.
Okay, that answers my question, I, you know, how much do you have in it? Uh, you're gonna put all fifteen grand into that, uh, into that revolving fund, okay? So it increases to twenty-two?
Right.
Okay, okay, just put you up to thirty-seven.
That's correct.
Pretty much covered there.
Yes, yes.
More than covered?
Yes, I think so, I think it will help a lot.
That covers everybody. Alright, so I'm gonna.
Do we need to make a vote to transfer that?
Um, since Kevin is the one who signed off and submitted this budget, if he's okay if we just change. The wording to be transfer to special revenue, Long Pond Revolving, I'm good with that.
I'm good with what you said. Chance fund to revolving boat ramp beach?
There you go.
Everybody good? Went on to the next page? So we have health, professional and technical services and fees. Couple years ago, it was budgeted at forty-six hundred dollars, I think we might have utilized that for some testing where need be. Um, again, we will have some, I am anticipating some oversight testing. And, um. Will we be required to hire engineers, in my opinion, to deal with, uh, the issue with Excel? Or the issues that have been reported to us with Excel. I don't know exactly what type of testing, in the past, they've done, uh, some ground testing. We may in fact want to do some well, or water testing, stormwater testing, air testing, sound testing, all those things cost money.
Should they be responsible?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that point, Bob, I'm getting to that point. It's not a secret, and I do not wanna speak for the selectmen, but my hope was that, uh, with this recent settlement. Where we're receiving an annual gift of twenty-five thousand dollars to the town in addition to tipping fees. That I think are estimated to come in somewhere around seventy-five thousand dollars a year. The hope was that we could utilize some of that funds and not necessarily direct taxation to the folks here in town. To help keep Excel in compliance and to help mitigate some of the issues that a business like that potentially could, could have. So that is the reason why that we have a significant increase. I will tell you that we have tried to utilize DEP in the past, and when I say we, the town, again, I've only been in this position since January eighteenth. So, um, I'm coming into these, trying to get read into things, trying to get up to speed on a lot of these things. Uh, we have been given to borrow some sound equipment from DEP. Uh, sound testing could take hours to do. Uh, and at the end of the day, you can be sure that any business in town that is going to have oversight is gonna have their own team of. Engineers and, and scientists, if you, in some instances, and specialists to go out and do there. And if we are going to be in a position where we can adequately address those, we are going to need professional assistance with that. That it's not something that any Board of Health agent or even a building inspector. Uh, would be, uh, able to do on a consistent and professional. Uh, and when I say profession, I don't mean that we're unprofessional in what we do, it's just that professional engineers, stamped engineers, people who have a history of doing these things. Um, you have a much stronger case oftentimes for enforcement in anything that we do, right? I can't just go over and say, I think your water's bad, right, we have to have somebody go in, we have to have it tested, we have to have a lab look at it, those things cost money. So that represents a small amount of that, but again, the, the increase is because there is a likelihood, a strong likelihood that the Board of Health. Uh, will be asked in the future to be, uh, have a, a, a stronger role in oversight. Uh, to this, uh, facility and facilities like it here in town. Uh, and in order to do that, we need to, uh, and I don't wanna use the word combat, but we need to be able to, to, um. Rebut, if you will, any of their professionals, right, it can't just be because Kevin says so. And how much, how much experience does Kevin have with sound, uh, uh, testing and all, well, it's very limited. It's, 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 it's a, it's a procedure with the planning board uses, the conservation commission uses to a certain degree, but planning board a lot of times will bring in and outside vendors. And as you, you know, uh, we have the applicants pay that. And so this is a very similar model, if you will, in that we will be receiving tipping fees and an annual sum of money. And this doesn't represent the entirety of that, but, uh, to your point, Bob, uh, yes, companies like that should be paying for it. And this is a way to ma, this is a way to make that happen.
The, the number that you got to do fifty-five, that's like a guesstimate.
Sure.
So you don't know.
Well, I don't, I.
There's no way for you to tell what services you're gonna need, or, so you just.
And it all depends on the testing that you have to do.
Right, currently the.
There's, there's gonna be many driving factors in you, you know, how you approach it, whatever, but it's very expensive. As someone who worked in that field in the past, I can tell you it's very expensive.
I asked Kevin to put fifty thousand dollars in there for the testing, some of the testing that I've seen that we may, you know. The issues, we get a lot of complaints about Excel, and some of the testing that we may need to do. Um, some of the tests were thirty-eight thousand dollars, another one was twenty thousand dollars, so I want the ability to have the, the Board of Health to be able to do. Whatever testing they may need, so, yeah, it's a guesstimate, but it's not just a guesstimate, I mean, there is some figures that I've seen. Of what it's gonna cost to do certain testing, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, you, my only point was, when I spit while I'm here, you have some information.
Right.
And some indication.
Yes.
That this might be a very expensive process and it might go a lot more than this, it depends how detailed and how nuts it gets.
You're absolutely right.
Some testing this year, different testing next year.
Yeah, you're, you're absolutely right about that.
Just that simple.
Can I just make one comment? Um, in terms of what you brought up for the revenue source, the tipping fee is added in to the budget for local receipts. So the seventy-five thousand is a local receipt, so that will offset what folks would, um, a tax burden. So i- it is being paid for basically by Excel, the twenty-five thousand will be subject to the board's discretion as a gift. So that's not part of general fund revenue, so in essence, Excel is contributing to cover this cost.
Okay.
Next item, we have health shops program, we do not need to do that anymore, again, that's through the public health nurse, but we were able to get them for free, uh, through her efforts. Uh, and in case anybody doesn't know what that is, a lot of times we have diabetics, folks that need to give themselves injections. So oftentimes, they have to do it for their pets, this, uh, provides them with a, a free shop's container. That they then put them in, it's a safe container, uh, that you could call, somebody would then go pick it up and provide them with another one. And it's, and it's no cost to us. Cause what we don't want, and we have had it in the past, is people throwing their shops in the general waste stream. Uh, and I can tell you as somebody who has suffered through a illicit pinprick stick with a needle when I worked in the hospital. It's not a laughing matter and it's no fun to go through that, so, um, this is a nice, safe and effective way to get it done. We have health advertising, should we need a public hearing, should the Board of Health decide that they wanna change rules and regulations? It's been a pretty steady number since two thousand nineteen, we typically don't spend money out of it, but it's always nice to have in there should we need to do something along those lines. The health meetings and training seminars, uh, they're just now, as I said before. The health meetings and training seminars, uh, they're just now, as I said before, getting back into the swing of things. Some are still being done on Zoom, so uh, but oftentimes there is a cost associated with this. Uh, and as everything else, the cost is going up, so, again, um. You can see, because we haven't had a full-time presence for for quite a bit of time, we haven't typically utilized it. And even at that, uh, it is difficult to get that much training in in one year and do your job. So I I have to pick and choose, uh, soil evaluators class is eight different classes. Four of them are in the western part of the state, because you have to go where the soils are. Uh, three of them are up north of Lawrence, but the good news is the test is in Bridgewater, so. Um, I'm not talking about a a two-hour Zoom seminar. The serve safe one I did, I paid for myself, that was a, you know, relatively short money, but uh, some of the others, it's. It's a necessary evil. No questions on that, uh, the next one, you may have, it says selectmen pay for this and it's got zeros. I misunderstood the the uh, the pay or how this was paid. It's a joint bill that's sent to the selectmen's office, but we actually are responsible for our individual portion of that, so for the border health phone. Um, we've budgeted seven hundred and fifty, so we reduced it down from the the thousand, I currently use my own phone. The the part-time agent utilizes our phone uh, too. So he can respond to emergencies should the need be or um, just the, excuse me, daily, daily work. Oftentimes we'll find ourselves on opposite sides of the town, you know, when we're doing an open hole inspection, he might be doing a. Uh, uh, a a perk test, uh, so it is helpful uh, for that. And that, again, was all in place prior to me getting here.
So that line should be seven.
Seven hundred and fifty dollars, yes. Again, if my understanding is right, e- each individual department, Kim, you were telling me pays pays that out of their budget, right?
They do, yes.
Health printing. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can you just go through the increases in the budgets because we need to keep moving so.
I am, oh, I'm sorry, just the increases, I apologize.
Yeah.
Well, that's the last one. I'm I'm sorry.
Yeah, health and state travel, Kevin, on one of, feed one of six.
Yes, I'm sorry. Not to mention, uh, I forget when it was, would it go up to fifty-eight cents a mile?
Fifty and a half.
Fifty, I was gonna say fifty-eight and a half cents a mile. Uh, so, yes, that it, that that number represents what would be utilized by myself. I mean, my hope was that some of this would still stay with Zoom, quite honestly, so that I wouldn't have to leave town. Uh, but in case I do, and obviously that's a line item that um, should I not use it, it stays there. Apologize. I told everybody, right, if you don't want my opinion or don't wanna hear from me, don't ask me questions. I do, I know, I know. Any other questions? Sure, come on down. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
You have everybody there.
Yeah.
Right, go right into conversation, because that's uh, Kevin, that's Victoria, but just in case Kevin. Has a new post, he's the chair of that board as well.
Victoria has a face, yes.
It's always smiling.
It is, it is. Uh, conservation.
Conservation.
Uh, one seven one, I believe.
Yeah, one seven one, we're gonna kind of go in order here, but I mean, and just if you wanna go over the increases and then from that budget.
Okay.
We do have something, I don't know, Kenny wants to do it, Victoria to do it, who's gonna do it?
Oh, I can, sorry.
Sure.
So for the clerical salary is part-time, but we would like to increase it to sixteen hours per week.
What, what number are we on?
One seventy-one.
Conservation, question.
Gotcha. How's that?
Okay, um, so we, um, for the clerical salary, we would like to budget it for sixteen hours a week. Um, but right now, it's budgeted at twelve hours and from the general fund, we only. Half of the salary comes from the general fund and the other half is paid out of the notice of intent account, which we get from filing fee. So we would like the general fund to pay for the whole salary as well as um, increase it to sixty-nine per week.
Then where would the notice of intent?
What is that?
Where would the notice of intent money then go?
Um, so we would like to reserve that for possible uh, grant opportunities that require a match. And other um, opportunities that present themselves.
Yeah, it won't go anywhere and the filing fee is, is every time uh, somebody files a notice of intent. Part of that fee goes to the state, the other part of the fee is reserved for the local town. And it is governed through state statute on what we can and can't spend the monies on. Uh, so in one instance, we've uh, utilized the money just to buy the gate more recently, is that correct? We were able to utilize that, so it's it's broad, but it's also rather defined, uh, and Victoria is right. Uh, there are a lot of opportunities that we just simply don't have the money to do in a matching situation. Uh, we've been able to do, get a lot of forestry grants, uh, and so we can do forestry plans and all for uh, to, at little to no cost. Uh, our open space coordinator, Mike McHugh. Consultant, excuse me, I keep calling him coordinator, again, unpaid position, uh, but it's something near and dear to his heart. Uh, so we've been able to get some of those, but uh, we would like to have a more consistent funding mechanism. Rather than depending on how many people file for things that we're gonna run out of money. Uh, currently, we're budgeted twelve hours a week. It's not really enough to service the the town and the community, you know, when you go down there and you find out that the clerk is only there for, you know, three hours for four days a week. So we're looking to try to get a clerk down there for at least half a day for four days a week. And again, even that is going to be diminished in that, uh, should they go to a Monday meeting, they get their two-hour minimum to go to the meetings. Uh, so their office time now is cut back, and that's if the meeting only takes two hours, in some cases, a meeting can take longer. Uh, so, this is, this is the the reason why we're requesting the increase is to have more of a, more of a presence, a daily presence, if you will, at town hall.
Is this, is this a shared position?
No.
The clerical?
No, it's a part-time clerk, it's not enough.
Just for.
Just for conservation, we have had a, we have had a part.
You got no floater? No.
No what?
No floater.
We don't have a floater in the town hall.
No. Again, the COVID reimbursement stuff, that's down to zero, we have the part-time, two conservation laborers, part-time, those are for fence keepers. Uh, at the port of pastures. Um, we have not been very successful in hiring anybody, because again, it's not exactly, it it's much like, and and this isn't endemic. Within all uh, employment uh, opportunities out there, people are looking for the best opportunity they can get and. You know, sixteen hours a week, coming in four days, not just doing two eight-hour shifts, no benefits, you're up on the third floor. Stage, which is basically a hallway, uh, it's difficult to find candidates that want the job, you know? And 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 this is the reality, right, we just interviewed, we had, you know, uh, three good candidates and we offered, and and. They declined, you know, because you can, i- in essence, for some of these salaries, you can go someplace else and get a better schedule for yourself to work around. Whether it's you have childcare or elder care or you just have another job that you wanna work around and fit this in, uh, it's difficult to to find that.
So.
So I'm sorry, sorry.
It's okay, I'm just thinking that we're, we have what, um, conservation professional and tech consulting, that one's going from zero to twenty-five. I don't know if anyone has any, if you wanna go over that one.
I'm sorry, if you just want the changes, I apologize, Mr. Chairman, so, um. You did plan it, you did plan it. Please.
This conservation laborers uh, TPT wages. Is for quarter pastures, is that correct?
Correct.
And what do they do there?
They would, if we had ever been able to hire somebody, open and close the gate, so open the gate in the morning to allow for the recreational use of port of pasture. And then go back in the evening and close it, so.
I just, I, and I always ask this question, a little old lady in the post office, because her husband used to go down there, it was a long story.
Sure.
Anyway, she says, well, you know, we have to have police on the roads twenty-four seven.
Okay.
Why can't they go down and open up the gate and somebody else close the gate?
Oh, police chief's here, if you wanna ask, it's not, it's not, I mean, and I'm sure he'll have his opportunity, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, chief.
That doesn't fall within their duties.
But.
They're not, they're not key holders.
This is, this is, this is. To to be clear, to be clear, this is not a new phenomenon, right, so we've had this line item here for a couple of years, right?
Yeah.
We've been unsuccessful, we've had a lot of complaints down there relative to to people going down there and doing illegal activities. Over my tenure of almost twenty-three years on the conservation commission, I have been told by various boards. You are to leave it closed, you are to have it open, you are to not, you are to put rocks down there, you are not to put rocks down there. Conservation commission serves at the behest of the of the selectmen, okay? We looked for a way or trying to find a solution to a problem, we wanna maintain access for those that want to drive down there who may not be able to walk. In the interim, we utilized minimal funds to try, create another parking area up up front so that the people could walk down there. Uh, it's one of the few areas that you can actually drive and get close enough to to the water if you are uh, any kind of uh. Disability or have difficulties getting around, it's not handicap accessible to the ADDA requirements. But you could certainly, if you had a hard time getting around, get down there, pull out a chair and and throw out a fishing rod i- if you wanted to. So we have been, we have been fighting this issue from illegal dumping, we just had a cleanup down there, that the neighbors have gone down there. We have since been told by the selectmen, because it's difficult to police, and I don't mean duck police. But it's difficult for the conservation commission to make sure that it's getting taken care of, that we had to put the gate up and and have it locked. So if we're gonna continue with that and not open it up seasonally like we would typically do from May. Memorial Day to Labor Day like our beaches are are open, uh, then there would not be a need necessarily to hire these folks. But if they do, uh, you know, listen, Ju- Junior Rizendi's, when he was at selectmen, he used to go down there in the morning, open up, close it, close it in the evening. Part of the problem is, uh, again, people are busier now, uh, and and you need a consistency to that. Uh, so, uh, the thought was, if we can utilize some of these funds to get a couple of people down in there. Have more of an everyday presence down there, eyes and ears on what's going on down there, and to keep it and and make it safe for everybody, that that was the thought. So the money had been put in the budget for the last uh, last year. Yeah, so, uh, but we had utilized it, because again, they're not knocking down the door when I tell them that, oh, what are my hours, well, you're gonna come in for an hour in the morning. And then at sunset, because it's open from sunrise to sunset or 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 dawn to dusk, if you will. Um, i- i- it's not in a very attractive position, the hope was that we could find a couple peoples, a couple people within the neighborhood or within the area. I'm sorry.
And and what, this isn't digging at you, Kevin.
I was gonna say, he asked me.
We, I am, I understand, trust me, I'm not, just like I said, not digging at anyone, I just wanna keep it moving, so, um, all the people waiting can also.
Hold table with the down, yeah.
So, um, the conservation professional and tech consulting agent, we had zero went to twenty-five.
So, we're pressing to hire, to this budget increase to hire a part-time consulting agent. Um, because Kevin is our chairman and he is going to be stepping down soon and a lot of the tasks that he does and helps with. Um, there's gonna be no one to do them, um, this includes um, investigating complaints. When we get a call, someone says there might be a wetland violation, Kevin will go and check it out when he has the time. Um, inspecting sites, um, during construction, um, providing daily guidance to clerical staff. Um, and monitoring ongoing projects, these are all things that won't be able to get done. Um, once Kevin steps down and we don't have an agent um, in a position to do that.
Any question? Any questions?
You say you haven't hired anybody, correct?
No.
No, we're looking to create the position, I believe, at town meeting, is that correct? Along with the town planner, the the reality, the reality is this, and this is not a secret and I, and and it's gonna come off, uh, that I'm. That I think awful highly of myself, but the reality is, isn't it? Um, because I have the ability to be at town hall and around town a lot because of my job. I have been acting as a conservation agent and and a pseudo-town planner, not to the extent of a professional town planner. But to Victoria's point, coordinating a lot of these things, going out and investigating, you know, my phone would start ringing and and still does, you know, six-thirty, seven o'clock in the morning. Uh, and it's not every day, it's not all day, but I was telling the story about back when you had to pay for minutes and 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 my phone bill was through the roof. Uh, so unfortunately, I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be stepping down a- after twenty-three years, I just got off the planning board after twenty. We need to bring in professional uh, that can deal with these things on a daily basis. Uh, not have to wait two weeks for a meeting to come in and get a simple sign off. Uh. It's it's important, we we do a lot of permitting in town, we have a lot of business in town, we've been very successful, I think, in what the planning board and conservation commission has done. Uh, but we need professional staff now to do this, we cannot continue to rely on on volunteers. And conservation meeting and training seminars, again, the cost of those have gone up, we anticipate having new staff. Clerical staff that we would have to uh, make sure that they would get whatever training that they would be required to do. Similar to Victoria did when she, when she, when she, first time got on board, so that represents, uh, there's a five hundred dollar increase there. Printing, we didn't have anything in the budget, we've asked for two hundred dollars. Postage just stayed the same. We're asking for fifteen hundred dollars again on the other purchase services. That actually represents a reduction, we typically don't use a lot of it, but should we need it, it's there. Office supplies are five hundred dollars to be consistent, again, nothing, uh. In-state travel, I'm sorry, in-state travel is two hundred dollars uh, for training, we have new conservation members, right, Margaret? Who may in fact need to go to training if they can't do it on Zoom, and this would be uh, for their uh, reimbursement for that. And then we have the conservation dues and memberships which go up every year, we anticipate another increase, we're currently at four hundred and ninety-four dollars a year. So we thought six hundred dollars would be a safe number to c- to cover it, it's a membership for the MACC. Uh, that conservation commission members are part of.
Any questions on that?
Next is planning board.
Planning board, yeah, and Rob, uh, Robbie Joseph, the chairman couldn't be here tonight, but Victoria's here, has long planning tech. And Kevin prepared the budget with me, so I think we could probably answer questions if you have any, I don't know, Victoria, do you wanna go through that one?
Yeah.
What number, tell me that?
One seventy-five.
Yeah, one seventy-five.
I think there's just the one question, um, the one real, the meetings and training seminars is the only real increase.
Yeah.
In this one, right?
So I can see the four hundred to a thousand.
There's your town planner.
The town planner on the bottom. So I think, I don't know, training and seminars, we're probably, I'm.
Again, we, we have, we have several new members now. Additionally, I think more of the training opportunities are gonna be starting to open back up again.
You guys finding it, you finding your budget? Oh, the town planner?
Oh, yeah, it is, yeah. Next time coffee.
Is that in the budget?
So, yeah, I don't know, so the questions you have, maybe Victoria can answer. Did you, did you have specific questions on this?
Hit the notes.
I mean, the thing with the town planner, I I worked with the planning board to request this, I mean, I think, um, you know, my background is planning. The town really needs to have a town planner to move forward with a lot of things, land use planning, the master plan. Um, grant, uh, grant opportunities that we've missed out on, I mean, I'm currently trying to do a lot of grants and I'm working, but I I can't. There's just too much for the town administrator, whether it be me or somebody else, to do that and the grants. There's just too much for the town administrator, whether it be me or somebody else, to do that and the grants. Um, and we're busy with planning, so the planning tech, as much as Victoria has actually stepped up and done some grants. She's not gonna be able to do all of that either, when they actually start coming in and have to be managed. So I think at some point, the town needs to be seriously considering a town planner, and that's why I asked to put it in the budget. And we will be trying to create the position on town meeting floor as well. So I don't know, I answer for you, Victoria, or?
No, I will just, I'll, yeah, I'll echo that, you know, we do, there's a lot of revenue that comes from proper permitting. Uh, through the planning board. I mean, I just, regardless of what your opinion is on solar, we bring in well over a million dollars in taxes in solar alone. And so, if you look at it that way, uh. There's revenue coming in that I, in my opinion, would help cover the cost of, of a town planner. Uh, and it's, it doesn't end with the permitting, again, complaints, follow-up, compliance. Uh, meeting with applicants, meeting with potential, uh, uh, commercial, uh, enterprises or endeavors. You need a professional, uh, presence to do that.
You got the soil board next, but I don't see any changes, so I'm not sure.
One seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven. It looks level funded to me.
Unless anyone has any questions.
I mean, but I think somebody here could answer them if you had them, no? You're good?
And that's another one that brings in thousands upon thousands of dollars in tipping fees. I mean, Cape Cod aggregate loans, fifty or sixty thousand dollars a year that comes in. Have we dismissed, Mr. Chairman, am I off the hot seat?
It, it doesn't matter to us.
Callum, will you be patient and allow Cheryl to go first? Thank you so much.
He's a, he's a great man.
Yes. One sixty-one, we're gonna do town plan.
We'll work on it, we'll be sure as of the next town meeting. Bylaws, all physically decided by Rocky Pissers.
Okay, so good evening, everybody. My name is Cheryl Estrella, for those of you that don't know me, town clerk. Um, in the town clerk's office, uh, we cover three departments, which is town clerk, elections, and board of registrars. Uh, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to go over department, uh, one sixty-three, which is registrars. That seems to be the simplest budget, let's go through that one first. Pretty much no changes here. Uh, there's a slight increase of, uh, thirty-three dollars. And that's for the town clerk, um, who is the, uh, chair president for the board of registrars. Um, and that is a mass general law stipend, when the town clerk serves as the board of registrars. Uh, it's a percentage based on the enrolled voters, so that fluctuates depending, you know, we have people who come and go into town, so. It was an increase of thirty-three dollars there. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but we probably just skip over that, okay? Um, I'd like to go over to elections, which is, uh, department one sixty-two. With elections, obviously, that is a fluctuating, um, budget every year, depending on how many elections we have. Uh, this past year, we only had one, which is the annual town election, that just happened in April. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, we are on schedule for currently three elections. We have the, uh, state primary, which is happening September sixth. The, uh, November general election for the state, and then again, the April election. Um, so along with those elections, early voting is now mandatory. We're waiting on guidance from the state in regards to how long early voting will be. So you'll see, um, the increase in the salary and wages went up significantly, obviously, because we have to have coverage. For those three, um, elections, and then, um. Uh, we also, uh, had an increase, um, for the professional and technical. Um, line item went from twelve hundred to twenty-five hundred. That's to include the maintenance for the new pole pads, if you went to the, um, April election. Uh, you notice that we instituted that, uh, the electoral voter check-in. So that all needs to be updated in the software every, every time there's an election or a primary there. Um. Uh, the coding and the ballots, that stood the same, and then there was, uh, we just added a little bit into the elections food supplies. Line item, just for that, those added two, um, elections coming up in September and November. Um, so overall, there was an increase of twelve thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions for that department. Moving on to the town clerk's budget, it's department one sixty-one, I'll give you a chance to flip to that. Okay, so, uh, just increases only. So first line item, um, the increase for the town clerk salary, that increased, uh. One thousand nine hundred, the request for an increase of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That represents an increase, um, of three percent, to kind of be in line with the two to three percent increase for the clerical union. That's just something that, uh, that kind of just always coincided there. Um, uh, going over down to the, uh, clerical salary, uh, that was a big change, so I did request. That represents a request for an additional person in that department. Um, the town clerk's office, uh, since the nineteen eighties, has been running with two people. At that point, um, we were, the population was approximately thirty-five hundred. Um, we are now over nine thousand, closely approaching ten thousand, um, people in town. And just the workload that comes down from the state, everything that we are mandated to do, um. It's become increasingly difficult, because, uh. I have to work the window, I have to work the telephones, I have to work all the emails, and, and. In order to do all of my reporting and everything that I need to do, I don't have opportunities, so I'm doing a lot of it either at home, at night, on the weekends. Um, so I'm requesting, um, a potential part-time employee. And that would be at nineteen hours a week, at a step-one rate. And then that also included there is the contractual increase for the current staff member we have in that office. Um, going down for the next increase, town clerk's meetings and trainings and seminars. Um, we increase, I requested an increase of, uh, to twenty-three fifty there, that's an increase of eight hundred and fifty dollars. Um, in order to be compliant and current with Massachusetts state laws and earn credits towards my certification. Uh, attendance at these trainings is crucial, because that's where I get all of my, um, credits. Um, this includes, uh, four-day trainings also for the staff in our office. Moving on, there was a slight increase for, um, purchase services. That was just a price increase in that, in the dog, uh, database software, uh, not really a lot there. Um, town clerk in-state travel, there was a significant increase, obviously, with everything opening up. Um, and all the opportunities to, um. Collect my points in order to, uh, be certified. Um, this would cover the travel and mileage reimbursement. Um, I just wanted folks to understand that, uh, my predecessor, um, had her, received her master's certification. Many moons ago, so she didn't have to, um, accumulate as many points and attend as many trainings. Um, in order to receive her certification, because she was already at that top level, she just had to maintain it. Um, so where I'm starting from the bottom rung, I've just got a, uh, increase on that, um.
How many do you think that would, um, cover, Cheryl? Like, how many trainings roughly?
Uh, one, two, three, four, five, six. That would be nine in total. The Mass Town Clerks Association is, um, uh, a very formidable association. Uh, we have our own lobbyists, um, we work directly with, you know, the state legislators. Um, you know, a, a lot of the laws that are passed, you know, uh, we have a role. In that, so we're a very active association. So overall, with those, um, increases, uh, the total came to twenty-four thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and one cent. I'm assuming there's gonna be questions on that, on that one.
I just have a, I'm just trying to understand the, the difference in the two. So we have town clerk assistant salary, which had a budget for nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. It's a request in zero for twenty-three, and then the one below at the town clerk, like, what's, what's the difference between the two?
Because there was, um, um, the assistant, I was assistant for Jackie, um, but I had to, uh. The clerical staff currently that we have in the office is not an assistant. The town clerk appoints the assistant.
Okay, so you don't, so, so.
I don't have an as- an, an assistant.
So these budgets were for you when you were the assistant, and it was you and Jackie in your office, now you don't have an assistant, and it's just.
Yes. Uh, then I have two, um, capital asset requests, should I go over those now? No, okay, okay then.
Nope, I'm good.
Actually, I just, uh, just one, one quick question, this.
Oh, we on town clerk?
Yes.
Okay.
This labor work fee, uh, step one, step two, step two, step two, the, uh. This is.
Can you show me? Is he looking at this one?
That's, that's, that's the request, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So that the town clerk clerical salary wage is BFT one.
So that was.
Twenty-one was twenty-one thousand three forty-nine, right? According to this. Twenty-two, huh? Twenty-two was zero, one, from zero fifty-six, but this is the scheduled. Clerk step one, these are all the same clerk, right? This is all the same person?
No, she's talking about adding a part-time clerk.
I understand it, but it's all the same, this schedule is for the same person?
No. No, there's two different people, two different people, two different, uh, rates.
Their rate changes mid-year, so that's why it's like one rate and then a second rate.
That's my question, okay.
Was that more confusing, the way I did it, should I have not done it that way?
The way I'm looking at it, well, of course, I know.
The top line is the new person you wanna hire, and the second two lines are the current.
Correct.
Together.
Correct.
And it's contractual.
Correct.
What's the bottom line?
Uh, that's, that's the same person, that's, um, that's extra hours that we had to include her for. Um, cause she has to be present for town meetings and elections. So she has the option, it will put her at the forty hours, and she has the option to either take the pay. Or take the day off, but if she decides to take the pay, I need to have that in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last, but definitely not least. Sorry, Chief, wrong money.
Hello, hi, good evening. Hi, Bob, you're outnumbered.
Huh?
You're outnumbered.
That's a good thing.
So we'll start with the police budget, if that's. Okay. So one of the line items that reflects an increase is the, um, police chief. And that is based on, uh, contract. Selectmen and I entered into an agreement, that provided for a, a three-year period, three-year duration. And this final year, um, there's an increase of three thousand six dollars and sixty-three cents. Uh, let's see, next line item that's increased, I have. Is, uh, retirement sick leave buyback. So we have two employees that are retiring at the end of that, uh, next fiscal year. And the contractual buyouts represent eight thousand ninety-four dollars and ninety cents. We also have an in- increase of five hundred dollars to the training stipends.
Chief, did you want to address the confidential secretary?
Yes, so, okay.
He's doing it by different.
I'm just going over the. Okay, so I just zeroed in on, on those line items that increased, that I'm using the form type.
Okay, just wait. So you, Larry, please, let me, yeah, police training.
Police fifty-one.
I got it.
So stop me at any time, um. So we just did the stipends. And now we're gonna move on to the police secretary, confidential secretary.
Forty-nine. Back on forty-nine.
Yep.
So, that amount reflects an increase in the secretary's hours. Currently thirty-two hours, and I'm asking, uh, for an increase up to thirty-six hours per week. Uh, and when you do the calculation, it, it comes to the figure that's in front of you. Now, earlier I heard some conversation about employees getting a two percent increase. This position, after the annual town meeting, will fall under the bylaw, if voters approve that. Uh, there is no two percent increase in that figure. I quickly did the math, and a two percent, uh, increase would be eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
So are you wanting to amend that at this point?
Yes, I would, uh, move to amend the amount. From three thousand six dollars and sixty-three cents to, well. Add eight hundred and ninety-five dollars.
He's, he was just going on Terry's salary for forty-four thousand seven hundred and ninety-six, correct?
Yes.
And we're adding eight hundred dollars to that.
Eight hundred and ninety-five, which is a two percent for.
The Selectmen will have to vote, but I asked everybody to.
What is it? What is she doing?
It's, it's a she, um. Okay, so she handles payroll for both the police department and the communication center. Um, she handles all of the invoices, all the bills come in to the police department and processes. Uh, processes those, prepares the paperwork that goes down to the accounting office. All of the dozens and dozens of public records requests we receive. She goes through those requests, she determines whether they're exempt or not under the public records law. She'll, uh, go through those records and redact, anything that needs to be redacted, very time-consuming. Uh, she handles, depending on the year, hundreds of thousands of dollars in detailed billing. Um. Personnel records, so, you know, if somebody has a medical issue, she's gonna upload those, if some. A change of status for a raise, or, you know, things like that, to prepare those forms and then update them into the record system. Um.
Well, the implication, when you, when you read it, the police confidential secretary is, you know, it's someone that's behind closed doors. You know what I mean?
So Bob, that's, that's a good question, the reason it's confidential. So Bob, that's, that's a good ques- the reason it's confidential is because the secretary is going to deal frequently with labor relations-related material.
Yeah.
So, a confidential secretary is not gonna be in the union, right? Because it could be positions the board has drafted, et cetera, we don't want anybody to know about, right? Um, strategies, memorandum, things like that.
Well, I, I mean, again, that makes sense, but the connotation is that she's handling, everything that she does is confidential, and it's not really.
No, it's not.
Okay.
Um, let's see, she handles the fuel management system, so she's in the computer, she's looking at fuel levels, she's ordering the fuel. When the fuel is delivered, she makes sure the amounts that we're billed for match what we, you know, actually ordered. Um, she then processes those bills, send them out to bill the water department and the regional schools. She'll handle police record requests, which are basically other agencies, D C F, registry, um. Those are the things that come to the top of my head.
Multiple.
Yeah, it's a lot of work, it's, it's, unbelievable, she does a great job.
I'll second that, for the stuff that she does for my office, that's, yeah.
And then, I believe the final increase in, is in the gross overtime budget. So we have not had parade and fireworks for a couple of years, those were never funded. Um, so when I looked at the average overtime rate, times the number of offices necessary for deployment for the, uh, for the fireworks, I came up with that figure, which was just over three thousand dollars. So let me emphasize that the group putting on the fireworks and parade do not pay for any of the police or fire officers deployed to those events. So we eat that. And, you know, that's the way it's been, but obviously, we, we need to fund deploying those officers.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Um, so there's no parade this year.
No parade.
So are you reducing your request?
No, so I made a mistake when I put fireworks on that, that three thousand dollars would, would be approximately eleven officers at their overtime rate, just for the, just for the fireworks.
So the calculation of fireworks, fourteen officers at seven hours coming out.
Yeah, I reduced it to eleven, and I.
Oh. Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I prepared that early. So if I took eleven officers, and I took the average overtime rate, and then I multiplied that by five point five hours for the deployment, it was a little over three thousand dollars.
So what should the number be on page fifty? The first line item, police additional gross overtime. Because on my copy, I have one sixty-two, two sixty-three, seventy. Which is based on an increase of nine thousand two ninety-one eighty-four.
All right, so I'm a little lost, see, what page did you say?
Uh, page fifty.
Okay.
Top line had to.
If you were to add. Two, it's this one, right, and then this one?
Yeah. Let me see if I have the, let me see if I have the backup to that.
Do you have it? Are we keeping you updated?
Yes.
Not my problem.
Well, I'm looking for the backup, how I arrived at those figures, Bob.
Oh. This page? That page?
Oh, maybe that's it, yeah.
Can I get there first?
Make a paper answer.
I guess, huh?
Okay, so now I understand, so, so that nine thousand for the parade and fireworks should be reduced. So the figure should be three thousand dollars.
Three thousand?
Yes.
Okay, so then the request on page fifty, you only wanna add three thousand dollars.
That's correct.
To the existing one fifty-two, nine seventy-one.
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So that should be one fifty-five?
One fifty-five.
Yes.
Nine seventy-one.
So I think that was it for the increases on the, on the police budget?
Communications twenty fifteen?
So we'll go to the communications center now?
So, chief, details are not in here, right?
Police details are not in there, no, because.
Is there any reporting of that?
Yes.
Is there any computational reporting?
Yes, so what happens is, a private vendor requests the detail, right? It goes out, we have, you know, we keep the records of, you know, which officers took the detail, how many hours, et cetera. By contract, depending on the type of detail, um, we charge the, the vendor a fee, say it's fifty-two dollars an hour. On top of that, we will collect an administrative fee of approximately ten percent. Uh, gets billed out, contractor pays, um.
They pay the officers directly?
No, so we'll bill out, the check will come to us, we'll, you know, we'll process it on a, on a deposit schedule, and then goes down to the accountant's office. Accountant's office reviews it, processes it, from there, it goes, I believe, to the treasurer's office, treasurer's office cuts part of the payroll, right? Does that help?
If it's, if it's one of our officers, or, um, or a community that we put their officer on payroll.
So then.
It gets paid that way, otherwise, we get an invoice, or the chief will get an invoice from another community for an officer, and we then pay that community.
Right. So what are, then, okay. I, I'm just trying to get a, uh, an idea of, of details, the amount of officers. And then the, the number I came up with was a hundred and ten thousand nine hundred dollars, but that didn't include details, and we, plus I, I took out your salary, obviously.
Details aren't in the budget.
Uh-huh. Say what?
Details aren't in the operating budget.
Yeah, I can see that, but the, the number, you know, the overall number, uh, the increase, I mean, it gets, how does it, all right, how does it get to the police officer? After it goes through that process, it comes to you.
So what'll happen is, the officer will submit a detail slip.
Right.
And we put it on their payroll.
Okay.
Okay? But the account it comes out of is the detail account, not, you know, salaries or something like that.
So the detail account is a wash account, in other words, where those things come out.
That's correct.
Yeah, it's an agency fund, so exactly.
Yeah.
What comes in.
Set this up. Okay.
So the burden on the town is.
There's no residual in that fund.
No.
It's, it's money in, money out, one for one.
Yes, unless somebody doesn't pay.
Okay, well, that's why you have, please. Somebody doesn't pay, just call cops, and they'll take you.
Fuel, communications.
Where we at?
So we're on the communications budget now?
Communications, sorry. Two fifteen.
So I'll be just talking about the increases. So, the full-time dispatch supervisor has a contractual wage increase of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars and twelve cents.
Is she paid by the hours out of salary?
She's paid by the hour, yes.
How many hours?
Uh, forty hours. And then the next line item are the full-time dispatchers' wages. And that is an increase of nine thousand twenty-nine dollars and forty-two cents. And that is based on the terms of the collective bargain agreement, bargaining agreement, that was recently negotiated. And then we have an increase in the holiday worked regular wages. And that's five thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-two cents.
Is that contractual?
It, it is, so what happens is, for every holiday, the dispatches get eight hours additional holiday pay. And when you add that up, you get a figure, and we need to increase that figure by five thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and forty-two cents. Um, we have an increase in the in-service training line item. And that's one thousand two hundred and ninety-seven dollars and ten cents.
That's on page fifty-seven, if you're looking for it. Yeah. I see.
Now, keep in mind, when the base salary goes up, based on, you know, the, the C B A, it has a ripple effect on a lot of these other, uh, line items.
Right.
Um, additional gross overtime training, two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars and twelve cents. And then in the repair and maintenance equipment line item, we have an increase of three thousand seven hundred and thirty-one dollars. And that increase reflects, uh, increases to the police and dispatch software. Basically it. On that, um. And then finally, on the meetings and tre- training seminars, we have an increase of twelve hundred dollars.
Do they have to be certified?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah.
Yeah. So they have to be certified by the Massachusetts nine-one-one department, and also, they have to be certified by A P C O for their emergency medical dispatch and first aid. Uh, I mean, it, it's quite a bit, um. And it, I mean, if you were to observe them in action, it, uh, I mean, they're taking business phones at the same time as the nine-one-ones ringing. I- in a medical crisis, they're giving these emergency medical, uh, dispatch instructions. Um, I mean, I couldn't do that job, it's just, it, it's unbelievable, Bob, it really is. And, and, you know, the, the, the requirements for the training, it, it, it's bad in the sense, you're trying to hire people, you're trying to get them through quickly, and, and, it's just very time-consuming. But on the other end, the, the training really does pay enormous benefits. It's obviously saved, you know, saved lives, so. So that's the comm center. What do we go next, the fuel?
Fuel.
Fuel, oh boy.
Yeah, that's the scary one.
Well, that's up to, that's up to all of you guys and gals, because.
We have gas and drilling, what do we got?
We're, we're gonna be going to fuel.
Which is nine fifty. What is it?
Nine fifty.
Oh.
All right. So let's talk about fuel.
As you were estimating, five fifty a gallon for gas and six fifty a gallon for diesel.
Yes, so I put this number here solely as a placeholder for purposes of, of discussion. Um, but I, I don't know if you have a copy of this, but what we did is, we broke down, um, what we, what our average usage, usages per month over the course of a year, uh, both for gasoline and for diesel. Um, and we, when I, when I was calculating this, I inserted a figure of five fifty a gallon for gasoline and six fifty for diesel. So, I'd open this up for your.
Well, I, I can, I can tell you.
Insights.
Right now, what I see, uh, is, if it comes to fruition, and, and we have an, an increase in the, uh, valve price. The worst right now, is today was one oh five to six, it's not gonna go to one seventy-five, is what we're saying. So that would put gas at between ten fifty and eleven dollars, but diesel is thirteen, the pumping oil at thirteen by the fall. So if we're planning ahead here, I, and I'm just, it's up to the selectmen, but, uh, you look what's happening to the gas now, it's continuing to go up, it's not gonna go down. And right now, this morning, pumping oil was six dollars and eighty cents a gallon. So, two fifty is, is totally unrealistic, I think.
At five fifty.
It's five.
Five fifty.
Not five fifty, I think it's unrealistic, I think you should.
Uh, so I, I just caught part of the highway surveyor's, uh, presentation, but what was he talking about? I thought he said, uh, certain fuel prices, or what's he using?
Everything is going nuts.
I think he was probably talking of.
He was talking horrible.
He was talking about.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know, Bob, I, I went to the ener- U S Energy Information Agency for some guidance, and basically, they said it's unpredict- unpredictable about volatility, the market, the war, you know.
God, the wholesalers that I've talked to were all saying the same thing, these guys have been doing it for a hundred years, and they said, they just, it's gonna go off the chart, they just don't know how far off the chart it's gonna go. So it depends on, it depends on the selectmen, what they wanna do.
I'm okay with leaving it at this, I think this is realistic at this point, I mean, we don't have a crystal ball, right? If we all bid, we'd be buying down.
Well, it's better to be prepared, forewarn is more on.
I know, but we have a, a lot of residual to increase this budget, do we?
Um, not really, um.
So, not really.
I mean, I think we have a little, little, little one.
Little.
I, I mean, I think I might be able to reduce, I think I've said the highway budget by a little bit, so. I'd say we could put a hundred in here, if I reduce the highway budget by fifty, from personnel.
If gas prices do spike, will they, uh, right, like in the, in the fall, whatever, we have the special time meetings, we always revisit it at that point, and add to the budget, rather than do it now. Then we have a realistic, you might, idea of where we're at.
Yeah.
That's so scary.
I'm sorry, use some of those bikes upstairs, chief.
Well, if things keep going forward. You get a special time meeting, that, people might not be in the mood to increase anything. Because their.
You would have a better.
Better angel, it's going on.
Yeah, right, yeah, it's, right now, we were just addressing.
We're going based on speculation, well, wait, wait.
Yeah. I, I, hon- honestly, that's what I feel comfortable with, I think the numbers that you used seem realistic to me at this point, so, but, once again, what the heck, do I know?
I mean, one thing just to keep in mind, um, it is purchased through a state contract, um, and currently, um, we're paying three dollars and seventeen cents per gallon of gas, based on the last bill, and three dollars and ninety-two cents for a gallon of diesel. So there is some savings based on, um, utilizing the state contract, um, so there are some parameters in place. Um, so unfortunately, it's probably not making the vendor too happy, to be charging us that rate. Um, so we may have some protection, um, utilizing, uh, that state contract.
So, looks like we have about two to three dollars waiting room at this point, so I think twelve.
Right, with the five fifty, yeah.
With, with the five fifty, so, I, I think, yes, I think you're right.
There's a little bit of padding in there.
How long is that contract good for?
Um, well, the contract itself, um, they usually do it for three years at a time, so I'm not quite sure where we are. We've utilized this, uh, contract probably, I think, two years, so we may be on the last year of it. Um, somewhere in, um, F Y twenty-three, so. Yeah, so obviously, they, the state, the state will re.
Yeah, so obviously, they, the state, the state will renegotiate.
Right.
And see where we're at, but, you know, currently, with this budget right now, in twenty-two, you're gonna run out of money for gas, I think, so. Just because of these increases that we have to date, so that's something that in com will be seeing probably by the end of May.
Okay, so we're leaving it alone, is that the?
Consent this, so?
Yeah.
Okay, any questions for the chief? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
The last two you had, cultural council, nobody's here.
Yeah.
And Vicki couldn't make it from the transfer station, so would you like me to answer any questions you have, if I can?
Um, I talked to Mike Vicki about cultural council, I don't know if that email did work on, but it's not a big deal. I don't think we really have anything on transfer. I don't think we have any on transfer.
Second?
Well, I, I believe they.
I mean, the increases.
Now, there's a conjunction with.
I didn't see anything else in there, I raised an eyebrow. What number is it?
Four thirty-four is the transfer station. Four thirty-four, so the only thing.
Yeah, it's.
I will say their transfer station is breaking down mattresses, and it's saving money on their waste removal and disposal, so we reduced that budget by ten thousand dollars because they're not, the trash is not gonna take textiles come in the fall, and she, even though, based on current projections, we could have lowered it more, but we're not sure what will happen with the textiles. So we, we reduced it, but we left some room to figure out what we're gonna do with the textiles. The, the, the transfer station hours have increased, so there is a per diem person here under transfer operator that's been working there for eight hours a week, but this is a budget of about fifteen hours a week, because now the transfer station is gonna be open six days a week, including Sundays. So. We, uh, that's at fourteen thousand one hundred, which it was, it was budgeted for thirteen-seven prior, but they weren't using as many hours as they probably will moving forward. Um, that, the rest is longevity, which is contractual. The first two are contractual by the CBA. I don't think there was anything else, um.
They're budgeting for overtime.
Budgeting for overtime?
Fifteen hundred for overtime.
I think that's for, if, realistically, that's for if there's a snowstorm, then Tom will tend to come in and clean up and work Saturday or Sunday to clean up the place so that they can open Tuesday morning, if they don't clean it up when it happens, sometimes it will freeze and make a mess. So that's sort of a bucket, just in case they have to pay him for that. And, I don't know, and she might have said that. And then she increased for a thousand dollars for heating, I think, fuel, because of what's going on.
Right, they get their diesel delivered right to the transfer station for the backhoe, they don't go to the fueling facility, so there's an increase there.
I mean, if you have questions, I can ask her, bring them.
Hello?
Their overall budget's pretty, is less than what it was, just different categories. Anything else?
I don't think so.
Oh, that's it?
No, I'm ready to go.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I make the motion, I will second it, all of this, aye, aye.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion. All right, on favor?
Thank you all.